Okay, welcome everyone. Welcome to our regular city council meeting. It's our first regular city council meeting for newly elected council members. Councilmember Davis and Mick Ferguson, welcome. And Matt, welcome back. Glad to have you. And with that, we do have a quorum and we'll call them in need of order. We'd like to start off with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. And Councilmember Davis, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where all its standards, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And tonight, we have some recognitions and presentations. And our Chief Todd is going, and City Manager, Mr. Buckingham, you're gonna get us started on a couple of presentations?
Love to.
Great. You betcha.
If Sergeant Camby, Sergeant Muscata, and Officer Nolan would come right on up here, please. Counsel, if you would just sort of be right here, we'll put these folks right here in the middle.
This way, that way?
Those face the crowd. So this is the, I'm just gonna project my voice, AGP, please don't yell at me. Folks at home, be here in the room. And so, this is fantastic, because this is the second time in a couple of months that we are gonna recognize three Morro Bay police officers with a Life Saving Medal. So I just wanna tell you the story real quickly, and then we'll have Chief Todd present these medals and have the city council congratulate them. Our sort of custom here is when staff members are receiving recognition from the city, that the department head and the city manager recognize that, and the council then thanks them. And when community members, and you're gonna see that too, when community members are receiving recognition from the city, the mayor or the city council leads that in the staff fifth tier. But let me tell you this story. In early September, Sergeant Camby was sitting at her desk, and Officer Nolan, Sergeant Muscata were out on patrol. I say "sitting at her desk," she was sitting in the watch commander's office. And an alert came across the computer aided dispatch screen, and that alert said that the fire department, actually our paramedics, who are also fantastic, were being dispatched to a residence on Pacific Street where somebody had stopped breathing and perhaps their heart had stopped. So Nicole, being quick of mind, immediately called these two gentlemen who were out on the street on patrol. They responded immediately to Pacific Street. And then Nicole jumped, and she went straight to Pacific. And actually, our PD in this case beat the fire department there, because that's the kind of people they are. And it's not a race between police and fire, but all of our public safety, actually sometimes it is. But all of our public safety takes the preservation of life, especially here in Morro Bay extraordinarily seriously. So these three arrived on scene. I got this right, I think Tony Muscata started performing CPR, and Nicole was observing the patient, getting pulse and heart rate. And Officer Nolan went out to the car to get an AED device. And then he came back, they did this for about five minutes. So these folks aren't just, you know, shoot 'em up cops, they've got some real training. And so, this is what's really impressive to me, is that when they started to hook up the AED device, I don't even know what that stands for, automatic something, emergency defibrillator.
Something you're familiar with.
Got it. When they hooked that up, they detected a very faint heartbeat. And you don't wanna use that, actually, if there's a heartbeat. So they were smart enough, quick enough to say, okay, wait a minute, we're not gonna use the AED. They continued to perform CPR. And then our great paramedics arrived, these guys backed off, the paramedics do what they do with that extra level of training that they have. And what's important, well, I guess what's really important is the gentleman is alive today. But what is notable is that our paramedics and the doctors at the hospital, the patient was evacuated first to a hospital in the county and then WCLA. He'd had two or three previous heart incidents. And the doctors and our paramedics all credited these three for saving that gentleman's life. So without further ado, I'm gonna ask Larry to formally present Sergeant Camby, Sergeant Muscata, and Officer Nolan with the Police Officers Life Saving Award. So the Life Saving Award is presented to Officer Nicole Camby. And to Officer Tony Muscata. Can we get a picture? Make sure you get all, everybody scooched together a little bit.
Scooch.
There we go.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Mayor? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Glad to have you on the show.
I'm waiting for my kids coming up on the stage.
Good work.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
On the Charlie scene.
Exciting.
Yes.
Sir? We now get to have a follow-up presentation to the Morro Bay High School automotive class and their teacher, Mr. James Bueno. If you guys could all come forward, please. It turns out that in this county, deer have a habit of running out in front of cars on Highway 1. And on this particular evening, we had a major incident occurring, and one of our detectives was rolling back into the city to deal with it, and the deer ran out and totaled the car. The estimated cost was more than the vehicle was worth, it was $7,800 plus to fix the car, and the car wasn't worth that much in today's market. So it was gonna be totaled, and we would be without a car, because the city just doesn't have money laying around to buy new cars every time we break one. So Rick Catlett, Sergeant Rick Catlett, came to me and suggested that we approach the high school and see if their auto body class might be interested in working on the car. And it turns out that the teacher, James Bueno, jumped on the opportunity. And as you can see, this is a photograph of what the car looked like when it went into the shop. And the students began working on it diligently. Rick was able to obtain all of the body parts to fix the car for $583 versus over $7,800. The students worked diligently on the car, and after it was mechanically repaired, we then sent it to a body shop to take out a few extra dents, because unfortunately, the high school, although they might wanna consider, where's the vice principal at, sitting here? You might wanna consider a body and paint shop, you could really benefit the community with something like that. But we had to send it out to a local shop for the body and paint work, and it cost us a little over $2,500 for that. So in total, the school students saved the city over $5,000. And now that car is being rotated down into our Volunteers and Police Services, or VIP program. And it will continue to service the community for years to, well, maybe not years, but for a long time to come anyhow. As a result of the effort of all these students and the direction that their teacher provided for them. So it was a great learning opportunity, it exemplifies the strong police-community partnership that exists in this community, and it's something that we should all be proud of. So it is my honor today to present a certificate of appreciation to the Morro Bay High School Automotive Class and their teacher, Mr. James Bueno. And you can applaud now. Is that all taken care of? It's photograph time, guys. Mind let the cameras. Mr. Bueno, I forgot one thing, and while the council's getting seated, it just happens that we have another car that's been crashed and totaled. And our attorney is preparing a waiver of liability. And if your school vice principal or principal approves, we'll be donating that car in totality to the auto shop class.
Ken, are you gonna, did you have, you're gonna come up?
They don't know.
Okay, so let me, hold on. I think we've got a few more things going on, and Ken, and the car show?
Yes, Ken Vestefeld, resident of Morro Bay and Vice President of the Cruisin' Morro Bay Car Show. We're now gonna be in our 21st year. And through one of our directors, last year, we were able to have a small venue of a car show up at the auto, and back in the 60s, when I went to high school, it was called Auto Shop, now it's called Auto Class, Automotive Technology, sorry. And so, this year, we're able to make a donation to the Automotive Technology Class. And so, we would probably like to continue that on, and maybe in the form of maybe some scholarships. So I'd like to present our president of the Cruisin' Morro Bay Car Show, Mr. Chris Parker.
Hello, yes, last year, we went out and got the chance to meet with Mr. Bueno, and he made the comment that, I believe he was teaching another subject, and he saw the auto shop sitting there vacant. And he went and got credentialed in Automotive Technology, just so he could open it back up. We would like, on behalf of the car show, to donate $1,000 towards the auto shop program. And we hope you keep it up.
Ken, Chris, thank you guys. Thanks again, you all. Great job. Thanks for being in the community. All right, moving on from our presentation, next on the agenda is closed session report. Mr. Cudoni?
We didn't have a closed session, so there's no report.
Good to go, thank you. And on to Mayor and Councilmembers' reports and announcements, and I'll start on the right. Marlos, do you have any announcements?
I don't have an announcement, but you know, we had a great evening last night when we were all inducted into office, and I made a terrible error in my acceptance speech, and I'd like to correct it tonight. I neglected to thank my partner of 38 years, Glenn Sillaway, for all of the help that he gave in giving, getting me elected, so thank you.
We normally don't clap at council meetings, but he didn't get the clap last night, so it was well deserved.
I hope you don't mind if I do that.
No, that's perfect, thank you. John?
Sure. Good evening. As liaison to the TMD Tourism Management District of the county, which has a new name, Slocall, S-L-O-C-A-L, Mr. Buckingham and I went to the semi-annual advisory board meeting and heard an update on their strategic plan. They are moving rather rapidly and dramatically forward in achieving many of the initiatives they have established for the county under the leadership of Chuck Davison. And so, we heard a report on some of the markets that they are entering into. One specific one is China. They have an initiative called One China, to go to China and increase tourism. There's a significant interest on the part of the Chinese people to come here and visit Sloc County. And one of the things we learned is that across the board, even in California and throughout the country, many people have never heard of San Luis Obispo County, much less Morro Bay. Now, in some ways, we kinda like that, that's a good thing. But for tourism, not so good. So getting name recognition out there is extremely important. But I just wanted to report as your liaison that the monies invested by the city are working well. The data collection that they've made has really produced a wonderful strategic plan that's available online, if you'd like to go there and look at that. I also have a paper copy, if anybody's interested in getting a copy of that, they'd be happy to send that to you. So thanks for that opportunity.
Thank you, John. Matt?
Yes, last week, we had a kind of a subcommittee of the Harbor Advisory Board, and specifically talking about working water fronts and this concept moving forward. And it was brought up tonight when we were talking advisory committees. But still, this idea of a working waterfront on the harbor, it might seem like it's a no-brainer. But however, it's kind of exciting moving ahead with the general plan update and this whole idea of the working waterfront. So just, we'll keep you posted as that comes up. Also, this is my first official big meeting back, and I'd like to send a thank you out, council, to staff, and folks in Morro Bay for all your good wishes when I was dealing with my illness. So, thank you.
Thank you, Matt, welcome back. Red?
Hi. I want to say that I love the city's advisory boards. They do a lot of the heavy lifting and the hard work on issues that come before the council. Tonight, we had some interviews here at 4:00 for a good number of applicants for advisory board positions. We did not have enough applicants to fill all of the vacancies, so we're gonna go out and ask, extend the filing period and ask people to step forward. And along with that, I had this great idea. I had a conversation with Dr. Pruitt, the high school principal, last week. And during the conversation, he mentioned that he has some very bright students who would like to get involved with civic affairs. So I took my great idea to Mr. Buckingham to reach out to the high school and see if some of the students there would like to apply for advisory board vacancies. And I discovered at tonight's council meeting, when we were interviewing applicants, that they have to be 18 years old. So I'm hoping that we'll have a future agenda item to revisit that age requirement, and I just think it would be great to have students involved with the civic decisions that go on with running this city.
Great, thanks, Red. I have a couple announcements. First of all, I understand we had a successful lighted boat parade and Christmas tree lighting, and pretty good turnout. Unfortunately, I was out of town for some unforeseen circumstances, but I just wanted to thank Dr. Heading for carrying on some of the obligations there. And I just wanted to thank city staff for all the work on that event, and I understand it was a good one, so thanks to city staff on that. Also, there's, I just wanna wish everybody happy holidays. The city services will be closed on the 23rd of December. And I have an announcement for Slocog, so Slocog, San Luis Obispo Council of Governments, which is, I sit on that as the city representative, along with the other cities in the county and the Board of Supervisors. And we had an item on the agenda at our last meeting where we amended some allocated funds. And I just wanna speak to this, because this is an example of what happened for the city of Morro Bay. So our bike pedestrian bridge that was, that has been installed now, we were at a position, we were ready to go on that, but didn't quite have all the funding. Our Slocog partner was able to provide that funding, but the reason we were able to, Slocog was able to provide the funding, is that there were some other programs that were in the queue that weren't ready to go. And so, we were able to reprogram some of those funds, so we were able to fully fund our bridge. And the point of that is, is that we had an item, there was a pedestrian bridge in Shannon, and a small community, they had a number of students show up for the meeting, and they were requesting the board adopt the recommendation to allocate funds for this. There had been a couple students that had been hit by cars, and a smaller community that needed to have that funded. It was the same example for Morro Bay, where they were ready to go with their project, some other projects that weren't. But the other part of that is, since Measure J, our half-cent sales tax measure that was on the ballot, didn't pass, that particular project was slated for those funds for Measure J, should it have been approved. So I just wanna speak to that a little bit, as an example of, one, since we, you know, Measure J wasn't passed, there was a shortfall of funds to build a pedestrian bridge in the community of Shannon, small community. But we were also able to allocate some, and program some funds to do that regardless. But that was just a similar analogy, a comparison, from what happened in the city of Morro Bay versus another community out in Shannon. And I don't know if everybody realizes that the San Luis Obispo Council of Governments, that is the regional board, and that's how the board works together on that. Sometimes we'll, you know, allocate funds for Grover Beach, or Shannon, or Morro Bay. But I just wanna speak to that as an example, and I was just, yeah, just proud to see that small community get funded for their community bridge. And with that, that'll conclude presentations. I'm scanning to see if there's any more amongst us. Okay, great. And we'll move on to public comment. We do have a business spot that we open up for business, for public comment, and if there's any public comment, is, we have speaker slips in the back for public comment. Is there anybody interested in public comment for items not on the agenda? Okay, we do have speaker slips in the back, it's helpful, please. Sorry, I didn't notice that earlier. And then we'll start off with Sophia Tolle from Poppy Boutique. And Tolly, is that right? That's better. There we go. And if, Sophia, if you'd come up and introduce yourself and tell us about your business,
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sophia Tolly, and I'm the owner of Poppy Boutique. My husband and I fall in love with Morro Bay, and we were thrilled to own a business on Embarcadero and be a part of this great community. For the last decade, Poppy became a destination for Central Coast shopper, as well as visiting from all over the world. We have a great, we have an interesting mix of beauty and comfort for our customers. We offer a big variety selection of clothing, shoes, handbags, accessories, soap, candles, and many other gifts. Our main goal is to provide our customers with a great variety for options in a very comfortable, friendly environment with, sorry, in a very friendly environment shopping experience. So we would encourage all our locals to visit us on Morro Bay Embarcadero and treat themselves or find a gift for the perfect one. We will be having our end-of-season sale on the 26th of December till the 31st of December, and we can be having huge deals on everything in stores, so we'd love to see everyone. I would take one minute just to speak about a different topic that I was involved with in Embarcadero. It was our first year to have 12 Days of Christmas. Our goal was to give back to our community and thank them for their support for us all over these years by adding some festive cheer to the holiday season. We had Morro Bay High School choir singing on Embarcadero on the first day of December. We had face painting, fun with balloons, as you can see, pictures for kids. And we have Santa Claus, and we have snowmen walking all over Embarcadero handing candies for kids. All the events of face painting, the balloons and Santa and snowmen was free for kids. We just wanted locals to have fun and enjoy Christmas with us. And yesterday was the last day for the 12 Days of Christmas, and for that, I would like to thank all the people who are involved in making this successful event. I would like to thank Morro Bay City, the Chamber, of course, and all the businesses who participate in the event. I hope our local customer took a good advantage of our great deals that we had. We had 42 businesses over in Embarcadero and Morro Bay Downtown involved in this business program, just to give something back to the community. So thank all these businesses for participating, and I hope next year, more locals would show up for our event. Last thing is Merry Christmas to everyone, and wish you all a great holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. Thanks for opening our public comment. I just, I have a number. There's an item, C2, so John, did you wanna wait for that item, or you say you're gonna wait for that? Okay, good. And then WR, you're gonna do public comment. Okay, so first up is Rigmore, come on up, please, and then following that, Richard Sadowski.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Rigmore. I too want to thank all of you for leading us forward and to listen to our concerns. I also want to give my great, great appreciation to the fire department, who drove their trucks through our neighborhood and lit it up the evening and night last month when we lost electricity and was in pitch darkness. It made us feel safe, we felt they were out there taking care of us. Thank you so much, fire guys. Regarding the Centennial Stairway, I think the sketch looks a little plastic. If this is what we're doing, I think it should look a little more natural, especially all that light tile at the ground level looks weird. I also do not I also do not like the glass elevator. Just my opinion on that. Then I want to bring back an issue I brought forward two-plus years ago, but with a slightly different suggestion today. Mr. Davis said yesterday, I think, I think he said, that we should hold previous councils accountable for their previous decisions. So, 30 years ago, in the Beach Street area-specific plan, it was decided that instead of a public-view accessway along the bluff, the bluff-top properties would pay an in-lu fee towards a view deck at the end of Surf Street. This is their drawing. Looks pretty nice. Figure there should be some monies in that special fund by now. I think my neighbor had a great idea. Get rid of those three, four parking spots and build a parklet. The parklet would cover the dangerous drainage ditch. It would be a great place to gather with an awesome view, a super addition for the vets' hall, and a safe place for all the people who gather here on boat parade days, et cetera. When you leave tonight, please take a two-minute stroll to the end of the street and check it out. Just do not fall into the ditch. Thank you, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Rigmore. Richard Sadowski and Bill Woodson.
Richard E.T. Sadowski, Morro Bay citizen. My wife is ill, so I'm just going to have a couple comments on the WRF C2 agenda, if that's okay. My comments are similar to what I made at the Wharf CAC meeting. Just a little background. In 2003, I was hired by the Cayuga Sanitary District, and I was involved as a lead in building a lift station, number two, where we put a forest main under a creek and moved a lift station in. And I ended up being an environmental monitor on that job when we did the drill. And I also was hired for, due to the fact that the flow meters that the Cayuga Sanitary District was using were out of calibration, I ended up putting a new system in there so that Morro Bay and Cayugas can have proper accounting regarding that. This WRF project, I've been kind of involved with since 2003. And what I want to, I sent several of you in the staff emails, an email with regards to my comment that I made at the Wharf CAC. And one of them is, the consultants are using Wallace Group study of 2004 for a sewer system management plan, and they are misusing my work product. My work product is in there. The numbers that come from Cayugas are generated by me. And they're being misused, and I've always, for the last couple of years, been, had an issue with capacity issues. Also, exfiltration rates are completely discounted. So, that's an issue. And the other issue that I've mentioned and continue to mention is the fatal flaw of building a lift station in, near the location of where we're at right now, where the current wastewater treatment plan is, which, you know, moving one critical infrastructure, that was the whole reason why we moved to critical infrastructure, and replacing it with another critical infrastructure is not prudent. And I also want to mention that the city really dropped the ball in the last couple of years. Right now, with the new administration, you know, we're unlikely to get any federal EPA funding, and yet we had a, one of the people that sit on the Wharf CAC Finance Committee had contacted the staff to get, to go to Washington and get connected with the EPA there and get some grant funding. And because our project is wrong, and basically has not moved forward properly, you know, that opportunity has passed, and now we're just looking at loans. And I want to mention that I have a website for people that are interested in getting some of how much money has been spent. About $5 million has been spent, if we look at the project as a whole. It's www.morrobaywrf.info. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor and Honorable Counsel, congratulations on being up there, and good luck. This has to do with item C2 as well, WRF, and I can't stay. So, these are my comments on it. Listen, please listen. The wastewater reclamation facility project must be designed and constructed by construction manager-at-risk method. It works. The construction manager must have skin in the game, a dog in the hunt. Right now, the project manager, or the construction manager, whoever, has no risk or incentive to bring this project in under budget on time. Think about two years from now. In the middle of the project, what will the city leverage be to pull this project out? It is not too late to find many, very interested, qualified, hungry, construction managers. You can ignore the following if you do C-MAR. The Choral Valley is the right place for our WRF, but I don't see the needed extra protection for the, to prevent facility spills on our estuary. We need double, maybe even triple contingency design that would prevent this from occurring. I trust Black and Beach. They have an impeccable reputation for engineering. I do not know who imposed the 20% project contingency, but it is way too much. It should be 10%. Work expands to fill the resources allocated. In this case, dollars especially, and time. 10% will save an estimated $10 million and keep the project management's feet to the I have three or four more other things on here, and I will submit it to Mr. Buckingham. But last, I see the yellow light, and I'm running out of time. So, last, look around. You are the first and last firewall authority to oversee this project. You are the first and last line of defense for our residents. You are responsible to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I don't know any more speaker slips for public comment, and we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. And I'm going to look for a couple of responses here. So, Rob, and maybe even Mr. Buckingham, too. So, the comments about EPA grants, I know you and I went back to Washington, D.C. during our CMAC visit, met with EPA. Can you respond at all to the comments about EPA, and the EPA and grants and project and things like that?
Sure thing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. About a year and a half ago, a year ago, I spent probably two hours with Jenny Gerillich, a former EPA employee, going through reams of fantastic documents and ideas that she had on sources of funds and ways to leverage grant funding or other funding mechanisms for our wastewater reclamation facility. A little less than two years ago, Mayor Irons and I spent four or five days in D.C. That visit included personal visits that I made, and with Mayor Irons also. In one of them, we were sort of split up, going in different directions that day. But I spent about half a day at the EPA, talking to folks at the EPA about our project. We will likely do that again this March, and then last March, did the same thing again. Also met with the Environmental, Environmental Executive Office of Environmental Quality, I think it's called. But, so, we are absolutely plowing the field, making the contacts. What is important to understand in grant funding for a project is, in fact, this goes exactly, Mayor, to your comment and announcements, that the Morro Bay Pedestrian Bridge is there because there was a project that was defined that was ready to be funded. The same thing is true for projects like this. Until we have a project, that's, once you have a project, is when you start the grant application process. And we did not have a project until we got the Facility Master Plan from Black and Beach. That is now called a project, or it has a project description. And now, I'm confident that the two years of work that we've done preparing the ground, we can now take that project both to D.C. But honestly, D.C. is not the critical place. The critical funding, federal funding, almost always comes in the age of no earmarks, so we can write earmarks off. It almost always comes granted to states and for, or down at least to the state level. So, the Bureau of Reclamation, the state, the EPA's District 9, I think, is office here in California. And then, much of that federal, or some of that federal money goes to the State of California agencies in order to distribute. There is also, as you all know, a significant amount of money in the water bond that passed a year and a half ago, or two years ago now. And so, we absolutely have grant funding on our radar. We have been doing, I think, the appropriate preparatory work. And now that we have a project, we can start applying for those grants. And actually, that is exactly where, if we look on the project timeline, that's where it talks about starting to go after grants. So, I appreciate that all of us want to see the grant process producing fruit. That process can't produce fruit until we have a project. We now have a project, and we will go strongly forward in order to hopefully secure more than 10% of the project costing grants.
Okay, thanks. Thanks. And I just had one more question. So, there's one comment about misusing work product. So, I'll just, I just want to follow up on that a little bit, and if you can speak to that.
From what I understand, that flow analysis was provided to the Wallace Group for the sanitary sewer master plan from the Cayuga Sanitary District. And we're using that product as the Cayuga and sanitary district has intended, and it was published in that report.
No, you're not.
Richard, this is, public comment closed.
Point of order. That's not true. That's a point of order.
This is not a debate.
It's my work product, and I'm telling you, you're misusing the funds and misusing the flow analysis. I said, no, you didn't do it.
Thank you, Richard. I would suggest perhaps a meeting to work that out. The public comment would be, yeah. So, if you could just continue, I appreciate it.
I understand, my understanding of the data is it was provided to a professional engineering firm that made use of that data in their analysis of flows and loads, and that is appropriate use of that data.
Okay. Thanks. And then, can you respond to the construction management at risk?
My understanding, construction management risk is not allowed for cities without special legislation. So, unless we're able to lobby the state legislature to change state law, that's not one of the options available to cities. It is available to special districts, but not to cities.
And there's a, I don't know if the right word is similar, but there's another path and approach called design-build, and that's the same kinds of protections that one can get from construction at risk, you can get with the design-build.
All right. Were there any other things that need to be covered from public comment? I know some of this will be a little bit repeated once we get to that item, but I just wanted to respond to it from public comment.
If I could just note the, there was a question on the contingency and the amount of the contingency. I believe it's actually 25% contingency that is in the project right now that's right in my.
25.
Yeah.
25.
25 of construction.
Right. So, I just, so what was, what we heard was that the contingency was 20%. It's actually 25%. And Black and Beach actually recommended retaining a 33% contingency at this phase. And in discussions with them, they consented to lowering it to 25, which it's sort of right at the edge, but it is the appropriate contingency to have at this phase of a project. And that is, I guess that's, you'll come back to, so I appreciate the comment was made, and it is exactly right, that Black and Beach is one of the top trusted engineering firms in the United States to do this kind of project. And they're the ones that are recommending at least a 25% contingency, if not more, at this phase of the project.
Okay, thanks. Red?
Is there any way to look back 30 years and address Rigmore's comment about funds that were set aside or that were collected?
That's a fantastic question. And the money, and the money that's associated with it, with the specific plan, it was literally dollars. It was, it was a few dollars. You know, like $21 per development. It wasn't going to build anything. I'm not even sure why the amount of money was put in there as the requirement. So, there was an idea about what they thought would happen, and we would have development, and we would get some funds that would go along with that as part of the building permit process for things that happened in the specific plant area. But it really turned out to be pennies, basically. I mean, it wasn't very much money. So, yeah, we might have some money sitting around, but it'll be a few hundred dollars. It's not going to build us anything. So, I'm not sure what happened there exactly, but that's kind of how it came out in the wash.
Could I add that we're, engineering staff is, we're concerned about the stairs there at Surf Street. And I say concerned about them, just at some point, they're going to need to be improved or something. Frankly, at some point, they're either going to need to be improved or taken away. And we, Rob and I just worked on this a couple of weeks ago. Their engineering staff is starting to look at options for replacing or fixing up those stairs, and including a viewing deck is something that we could certainly add into that costing so that in the budget process and the capital improvement plan, we could bring that to the council for consideration of, here's what it costs to fix this, replace the stairs with something newer, better, and here's the added cost for doing that sort of simple stairs, or here's the added cost for making a viewing platform of some sort in that area, which seems to be a fantastic idea.
Okay. And do you see that coming back to the council during the budget process or during the goals and objectives?
I think during the budget process is a great time to do that. That said, it would also be something great to talk about during goals and objectives.
Was there any other comments from that? John?
Mr. Buckingham, is not the Castrell Consultants involved directly with the grant procurement and advising us regarding process, et cetera?
They absolutely are, and now that we have Facility Master Plan, that now is when they will really get to work.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, great. Thanks for the follow-up on that. With that, we'll, that'll conclude public comment and responses to that. Thanks very much. And we'll move on to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have eight items. Are there any items there that any would like to pull? Anyone like to pull to my left? A6. Okay. Anybody else?
A7.
A7. We have A6 and A7. Okay, I would take a motion to approve all items on consent agenda except for items A6 and A7.
So, move.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Heading, second by Mr. Makowetski. Any further discussion?
Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis.
Second.
Second was by Mr. Davis. Okay, sorry about that.
I do.
All right, thanks. We got that? Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries, 5-0. I like the 5-0. Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it. It's good having you back. Okay. Item A six.
All right. Yes, this is a question for Mr. Buckingham. Dave, could you explain, this was item A six, the approval of the revised job and salary for wastewater reclamation facility. Could you explain what's the plan or the process to train and to attract additional workers to that facility?
Absolutely. And if, AGP, if we can get your help with a slide real quick. So as we're getting there, a number of months ago, actually back in the spring, the, was presented to council, and the council approved, a gradual reorganization in our wastewater treatment, collection, and water organization to go from essentially three separate sections, a water section, a treatment section, and a wastewater collection section, to having one division with a utility division manager who managed all of that water. And so, council approved that. It was really a five-year plan so that by 20, and it was based in large part on the knowledge that we were building a new water reclamation facility, and that it was going to be, our, the requirements to manage that were going to be substantially different than our 62-year-old plant. And so, we have that in-state in view in order to hire now, so that we are hiring the right people who can not only manage our systems now, but can also operate the plant to the future. And so, the job descriptions that you have are the job, are the new job descriptions for new personnel coming onboard who will be able to perform both water treatment, plant, and water collection system work. Instead of having one group that does only one thing and one group that does another, they're going to be cross-trained. Your question was specifically about sort of cross-training, and there's been some great questions about what's the hiring going status, because we've had a number of folks are transitioning out of service. We, last council meeting, we thanked several of them and pinned service pins on them. So what this slide right here shows is, that is the current organization. And the six orange blocks are the six new employees that we have hired in the last three weeks in order to fill all of our existing positions or existing job vacancies. And so, as of, oh, about three hours ago, we have commitments now, and we have hired these six folks and have a full wastewater treatment, wastewater collection crews. And then Craig, if you could flip those slides over. That was the view of what it looks like today. What this shows is the future organization. And inside the box on the bottom right are the positions that these position descriptions primarily relate to. And the one, two, I believe it's seven, the seven new hires shown there in green, all of those new hires are now in, or will be in position, some were just literally hired today. And those are all, have been hired on under these new job descriptions, or will be. And so they all have the cross-training already in order to perform the tasks of the future. So, and then the four gray boxes that you still see there, those represent some of our existing employees who are treatment plant only or who are collection system only. And we now have five years in order to get them completely cross-trained to be able to do both jobs. So we're well over 50% of the way to where we wanted to be in 2021.
Great, Matt. A seven? Comments on A six? Sorry, Morris?
Well, I had another question on A six.
Okay. A six?
On A six, yes. Given that the current Facility's Master Plan includes two alternative treatments, are all the skill sets, are they the same skill sets depending on which one we choose? Or are there any differences, and is that taken into account in these job descriptions?
The skill sets are generally the same. The processes are different, but the general skill set to operate the water reclamation facility are the same. And a key element, regardless of what kind of process we choose, and frankly, in any case, is going to be the training of our employees to operate the new facility. But the most, probably the most important part of this is, we are hiring the right kind of employees to operate whatever kind of plant you choose to build.
Okay. Anybody else for A six? Okay, thanks. A seven?
Just a quick comment on A seven. Wanted to just call out the excellent effort on the part of the cities noted in the agenda tonight. This is probably one of the only examples where there have been mitigating dollars for economic development with plant closures, especially nuclear plants across the United States. Looked for examples of any others and really could not find any. In fact, you may have recalled recently, about six months ago in the Tribune, there was an article about four communities that had very, very difficult economic times with plant closures. And so, I just wanted to thank all of the cities involved for the great effort in securing at least some funding. It won't mitigate completely the impact in the future, but at least some funding that will come to Morro Bay to help mitigate the closure of the plant. And that's about a half a million dollars. So, thanks.
Great, thanks, John. Any other comments for that? And we have public comment for consent.
I just had one more quick question about, and this also has to do with A eight, and I just thought, for the sake of the public, if you could just summarize for us what Morro Bay is going to receive in funds as a result of the settlement?
You bet. I'll briefly do what, and I'll have Mr. Panoni clarify the when, if I get it wrong. So the City of Morro Bay will receive just under $500,000. That will go into the general fund for the council to spend, based on how the council's direction. That $500,000 is, must be spent on economic development opportunities. It's pretty broad, but as long as we got a good tie to economic development, you can, you'll be able to allocate that toward any economic development supporting projects. The city will also receive just over $100,000 a year for eight years, for nine years, thank you. And that will also be general fund monies, but completely unrestricted. So you can, we can allocate that toward whatever project you would like to. And the timing on it is, is probably best summed up as not soon. So there, once all of the legal bows are tied and there is sort of a, you want to take that?
The process, as you recall, we have to go, this whole process has to go to the California Public Utilities Commission for approval, and then someone could challenge that approval. And so this money won't come until all those challenges are done and the agreement's actually validated.
Okay, great. Any other comments for that? I have a speaker slip for item A seven. So Jane Oliveira, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. My name is Jane Oliveira. I'm with Pacific Gas and Electric Company. I just wanted to mention that, you know, PG&E has been part of this community for many, many years, and we're privileged to continue working through the retirement of Diablo Canyon Power Plant with the community. And believe that we've come together with a very strong proposal and settlement agreement to continue building the community and the economic development of the community, the region as well, as we work through this process with the PUC and through the PUC's process in the coming years. So thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any further speaker slips for this, for consent. So I was going to close the speaker slip, the public comment for that. And then we can take a motion to approve items A six and A seven.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Heading, a second by Ms. McPherson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries, 5-0. Great, thank you for that. And now, we're right on schedule for public hearings. And our next item for this would be public hearing, the adoption of ordinance number 609, repealing and reenacting various chapters of Title 14 of the City Morro Bay Municipal Code relating to buildings and construction.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Ayers, members of the council. We're back here for our second visit to the adoption of ordinance 609. As you may recall, we introduced it on November 15th. And this ordinance updates the building code to the 2016 version through repealing and reenacting chapters 14.01 through 14.12, which is the Buildings and Construction Section of the Morro Bay Municipal Code. The building code, the 2016 version, building code is updated every three years, so the previous version is from 2013. The building code will take effect on January 1 of 2017. And the California Buildings and Standards Code is a part of California Government Code, specifically Title 24, and is applicable to all building occupancies within the State of California, sort of regardless of whether the council adopts them separately or not. These are all of the chapters that are part of the building code. I'm not going to read them all to you. They're all on the, when I could have brought all the volumes, it would have filled up the table about this wide. But I chose not to do that. Not only are we adopting the building codes, the ones that I had on the screen there, we're also adopting local amendments. Cities are permitted to adopt through ordinance, local amendments. Typically, they relate to things that are particular to our specific community, and they can be things that are more restrictive than the policies that are found in Title 24. Local amendments are typically necessary to address climatic changes, topography, geologic conditions, or any other sort of conditions that are particular to a specific community. Our local amendments specifically, we, the first one relates to, we have permitting requirements for anybody that wants to build decks and/or flatwork that's under 30 inches above grade and exceeds 200 square feet. Typically, those things are exempt in most communities from permitting requirements. We don't exempt them because we have a bay and a estuary sitting out there, and we want to pay attention to water runoff and make sure that's being properly treated. And so we have a limitation to that. It makes you go through our process to make sure you're not increasing runoff in areas and make sure we're addressing runoff appropriately. We also have a prohibition related to sky lanterns. Those create a fire hazard. You have questions about that? Our fire chief, who just showed up a little bit ago, can answer questions related to that. And the last local amendment also relates to the ability for the city to have sale of safe and sane fireworks, also subject to the fire chief's approval. We're almost done. And so, staff's recommendation here is to adopt ordinance number 609. Again, that's repealing and reenacting chapters 14.01 through 14.12 of the Morro Bay Municipal Code to incorporate the 2016 Buildings and Standards Code as adopted by the State of California and the local modifications that I just mentioned. With that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Also, we have fire chief behind me that's also able to answer questions related to the fire code.
Any questions to my left? Matt?
Scott, you had, I emailed you earlier today, and you had a great answer. My question was, how do these ordinances fit into the general plan update? Could you explain that and why we're doing this now and then with the general plan going on also?
Yeah, you mean, some, people might wonder why we're doing this outside of that sort of general plan, LCP zoning code update process. It's a comprehensive update of the city's codes. What's, why is this different? They're two completely separate processes. The building code is taken on by the State of California. It's found in California code and is adopted by the State of California. And then it becomes effective for all cities within the state. So even if we didn't update it on our own, we would be required to follow it. I think I mentioned that earlier. So it's just a separate process. It's not, it's not part of our general plan. It's not part of our local coastal program. And so, that's why we're doing it at a separate time, because we need to have the local amendments in place, or we would like to have them in place, sort of commensurate with the January 1, when the code will take effect. It'll be a little bit after that, because it's 30 days after you take this action, but we're pretty close.
Anything, Red? None? John? Marles? Okay, good. I just have one question. So, just a process question. So this was introduced, it was first introduced on business, and now it's back as a public hearing. Can you just talk briefly about that?
Okay, Joe.
Thanks.
It's because what the state statutes require.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That's a great explanation.
And to the point. Thank you. And with that, unless there's, I don't have any speaker slips for this item. Are there any item, any people to speak to this item? Seeing none? Okay. Close public comment. And I would take a motion to adopt ordinance number 609, repealing and reenacting various chapters of Title 14 of the City Morro Bay Municipal Code relating to buildings and construction.
Mr. Mayor, we need to read the title that's in the recommendation on the.
Would that be 14.01 or that recommendation right there? Adopt ordinance number 609, repealing and reenacting chapters 14.01.
No, it's not up there. It's on your agenda. Under whatever says recommendation at the top of page three.
You can do it for me, Joe.
Are you talking about the ordinance number on?
Ordinance number 609, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay.
I haven't taken a motion from anyone who wants to read it.
Okay, I'll take a stab at it. How's that? I move that the council adopt ordinance number 609, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay, California, repealing and reenacting chapters 14.01 through 14.12 of the Morro Bay Municipal Code, adopting by reference and amending the 2016 California Building Residential Electrical Mechanical Plumbing Engineering Historical Building Fire Existing Building Green Building Codes and 1997 Uniform Housing and Abatement of Dangerous Building Codes in Appendix Chapter 33 of the 1997 Uniform Building Code.
Second.
Wow, that's a great motion and a great second motion.
May I say, may I say, however, that Marles misspoke in where it said energy, she said engineering.
Oh, dear.
Can we correct that?
Yes.
Is that a good way to do that, Mr. Panoni?
amend.
Noted. So we have a motion and amended motion.
amended second.
By Ms. McPherson, a second by Mr. Heading. And any further discussion? None? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries, 5-0. Thank you very much. And we get on to our business items. And just, I'm just going to entertain the council. So we have items C1, 2, and 3. I was going to ask council to shuffle item C3 forward, and we would do item C3 first, item C2 second, and we do item C1 last. We have a consultant that's here for us to present on the salary study and would like to be able to be expeditious with that. Everybody in agreement with that? Cool, okay. So let's move item C3 to the front. And item C3 is Discussion of Initial Results from the Salary Study Conducted by Coff and Associates and Confirmation of Next Steps.
All right, thank you Mayor Irons and council members. Craig Smallinger with the Finance Department here. Before you, you have a salary study presented by Coffin Associates, who was retained by the city to go forward and do some salary comparisons and put that data together for us. And you're here to receive that data, just more on a kind of a high-level status and not to dive into each individual detail or piece of information that's gonna come down in the future. This is more just kind of, here's a bunch of information, chew on it, tell us what you think coming forward, and then we can ask staff, gather that additional data, and bring that back forward for future consideration at a future meeting. So, the purpose, as I mentioned, is to receive information from that salary study that was prepared and will be presented by Coffin Associates, and to confirm the draft timeline and next steps regarding employee salary study information. So, the big question here is the fiscal impact. With tonight's action, there is no fiscal impact. It's simply receiving information and giving staff some direction going forward. Also, to have some back-and-forth conversations about kind of conceptually how that'll look. As you see on here, future iterations of this item will likely have those financial implications going forward. So why are we here? So, adopted City Council goal 10D is related to a compensation study. So that compensation study was, the intent of that is to have a complete salary study and compensation study going forward, which hopefully should guide the conversation for a larger level compensation policy, which will help guide MOU negotiations. So if you read further into that council goal 10D, it further describes that this information is intended to kind of feed those MOU negotiations, and all those adopted MOU, or the MOUs, excuse me, have the language in there that we would go forward with the salary study as well. So, as mentioned, part of the intent was to receive current salary comparison data. And our hope is that you will give us some direction to guide future compensation policy discussions, kind of what else you want baked into the compensation analysis outside and in, or excuse me, above and beyond strictly salary information. And then direct staff to compile additional compensation-related data and come forward at a future city council meeting. So, here is our draft timeline. So, as you can see, we're here tonight on the first day down there, on December 13th, to take a look at the initial data. The next council meeting on January 10th. The idea is to have a second presentation to include some additional staff analysis based on council input tonight. January 24th, we're looking to have the first council discussion on an actual compensation policy. And then either February 14th or the 28th, coming back with potentially a final decision on what that compensation study will look like. So, with that, we have Gayor Kramer from Coffin Associates, who's here to present some salary study information.
I'm just gonna give Craig a minute here to pull up the presentation. Thank you. Well, it's my pleasure to be here to present the methodology and findings of the compensation study that Coffin Associates did. Again, my name is Gayor Kramer. I'm Chief Executive Officer of Coffin Associates. And the agenda is pretty straightforward. I just wanted to give you a quick overview of how we go about doing compensation surveys, and then get right to the results and recommendations, and then see if there's any council input questions or direction. Please feel free to interrupt me any time with any questions you may have. In terms of the study goal, typically, when a study like this is done, as Mr. Smallinger mentioned, there's a concern or an interest by the agency to understand how your compensation, how your workforce is compensated, and how that compares to the labor market, making sure that there's a recognition by the agency of the work and level of responsibility that's assigned to the workforce, the various other reasons. One of the interesting observations from a consultant perspective is that the City of Morro Bay certainly has a variety of services it provides to its community, and so, surveying for all of those services in the labor market is sometimes a bit challenging. I'll get into that in a minute. Just making sure that, one of our goals was, of course, to provide information to the city to help you develop a plan that serves the needs that you have as an organization with the unique services that the city provides to its community. And usually, when we do compensation surveys, we look at what we consider equity or competitiveness at two levels, one externally, and that, of course, has to do with looking at the labor market and obtaining labor market data. There's also another aspect that we consider internal equity, so looking at the organization across departments and across assignments, and making sure that there is internal equity in terms of how individuals are compensated for the work that they're doing. Let's see, in terms of the process itself, when we do a compensation survey, there are two major elements that need to be determined before we do any data collection. Number one, most likely, the more important one, is to determine which agencies to survey. And then the other component is to identify the, what we call the benchmark classifications. I'll take the second point first, I have a slide on the first one. Benchmarking is a pretty typical process, where you would typically look at the entire classification plan of an organization, look at all of the job families and classification series that an agency has, and then select a certain number of classification and classification levels for which we obtain market data. And that market data then is used for the entire organization and all of the classifications and classification levels in the organization. So there's a certain, going forward in terms of implementing and determining compensation levels, there's a certain amount of internal alignment and developing internal relationships between certain classification levels. So we call that benchmarking. On the first point, in determining which agencies to survey, the agencies were actually determined by the city, but here just some factors that you would typically look at in determining which agencies to survey. Number one, most important, I would say, are, it's just the organizational type and structure, the services that are provided. That is a critical component, of course, because that's how we're gonna be able to identify comparable jobs at the survey agencies. As you can see, there are a number of other aspects that you would look at, whether it's number of employees, the size of the organization, number of employees, budgets. There are also some cost of living factors that you may want to look at, some ratios to understand how each agency uses its resources, whether it's number of employees to budget, number of employees to population served, and things of that nature. And this is the list of agencies that we ended up surveying. So you can see that there are six cities that were surveyed, and then in order to ensure, or with a goal anyway, to identify or find a sufficient number of what we simply call matches for as many of the job classifications at the city as possible, we surveyed three harvest-specific agencies, as well as three fire-specific agencies. And when we survey agencies, there's a lot of data collection that occurs. Again, as you can see, there's a lot of obtaining data. Much of the data, of course, in this day and age, is found on these agencies' websites. But there's also a lot of interaction, follow-up, that we have with each agency's human resources professionals, to make sure we have the most current and up-to-date documentation and data, to ask any questions that we may have about the data, about their positions, any help that we may need with matching, if we can't sort of figure it out on our own by looking at information that's posted on websites. And what our process is, is that it is, it's a pretty in-depth analysis of really looking at the entire position. Our methodology is called the whole-position job analysis methodology, and it is exactly what it says, because we really look at the entire position, the duties and responsibilities performed. We look at qualification requirements, such as knowledge, skills, and abilities, education, training, years of experience, licenses, certifications, so really get all of the components of the job. And knowing that no two jobs are going to be exactly the same, and considering that no two agencies are going to be exactly the same, what we look for are similarities and levels of comparability. So, understanding that we will never quite get to a 100% level of comparability, we look for at least about a 70% level or match to determine whether a job classification at a comparator agency is, in fact, similar enough to the jobs at your city for us to say, yes, we can include that in our survey. I will say that it's not a, this is certainly not a scientific approach or mathematical type of approach. It's a little bit of an art form. You know, we're all, on my team, we have very experienced compensation and classification analysts. But looking at all of the documentation that we can obtain, we make an educated judgment call by doing this analysis that I've described to say, is there a sufficient level of comparability between two jobs in order to make the decision to include a job in our survey? Okay, and then getting right to the market findings, what we found is that when looking at all of the job classifications that we surveyed combined, we found that the city is about 70% below market. You can see that there is a range, so we did identify some job classifications that are currently compensated above market. The majority, however, are currently compensated below market. It is a fairly wide range, which is not uncommon. We often find a little bit of a mixed bag when we do these kinds of surveys, depending on how long it may have been that the agency conducted their last survey, or, you know, how surveys are, I'm sorry, how compensation is adjusted based on the meeting confer process and things of that nature. But these are findings, as you can see, 11 classifications are at or above market, and 30 classifications are below market. And when I say market, I typically refer to the market median. In our individual spreadsheets in the report, you'll find that we typically look at average as well as median, mostly average because that is one of the most widely recognized statistical values that people are familiar with. We pay a little bit more attention to the market median, because that is, the market median is the value that is the true midpoint of any set of data that you have, where 50% of your data points are above the median, and 50% of your data points are below the market median. And to us, that is a more, a truer midpoint of the market, if you will.
Sir, could you just state the first bullet again?
Sure.
I think you might have said 70% below market.
Oh, I'm sorry, 7% below market. That would be quite, I apologize. That would be a surprising result, I would say. 7% is significant, only because there are 30 job classifications that are below market, and some of them, you know, almost up to 30% below. So, but the average of all of them combined is 7%. Thank you. Okay, now, what to do with this information? Typically, when we develop any kind of recommendation, there are several steps that we think about. Of course, one of the things that we usually get direction on from the client agency would be to understand what type of compensation philosophy you want to have as an organization in terms of how you compensate your workforce, whether that is market median or some other type of percentile that you would look at, is something that is typically decided by the agency's leadership that we work with. Another step in the process would be to design an actual compensational structure that consists of salary ranges and steps that are all calculated by formula, that all have a calculated relationship to each other, typically in 2.5% to 5% increments, so that there is a matrix within which all of your job classifications can be placed. And that is typically, the next step, once a structure is designed, job classifications would be placed within that structure based on market data that's obtained to ensure external equity, as well as by looking at internal relationships to ensure internal equity, to the two concepts that I've mentioned before. And then finally, the last step is to, of course, then determine actual employee pay. There's a little, it's a little bit of a separate process. One step is to determine a salary range for a particular job classification, which represents a certain body of work. Another step in the process is to then look at the actual employees who are doing that work, and determining where they should be placed within that salary range that's been determined for their job classification. And then going forward, the city, of course, would need to maintain and administer this compensation plan that's been put in place. I presented, or I prepared one slide to just talk a little bit about compensation philosophy and the things that organizations I've worked with typically consider. So typically, compensation philosophy is a way to figure out, for an organization, how to attract and retain high-quality talent, and at the same time, you know, be able to be fiscally responsible. That's probably the best way to put it. And there are several aspects that you would potentially look at, whether it's the labor market itself, and the kind of talent you would find, the competition over that talent, again, using the market survey as a reference point to figure out how and where to align the city with that reference point. Considering that the city, of course, has already invested significant resources in retaining its current workforce by training and development of those individuals, are there considerations around technology, regulatory requirements, that your workforce is required to have to perform their work? You know, is there a desire to consider a system of merit increases that's tied to performance management? And then, of course, in thinking about continuously managing and maintaining the compensation plan, oftentimes, cost of living adjustments are considered to ensure that your compensation plan is kept up with the market. So just a variety of aspects or factors that agencies usually think about. And it looks like that's all I have for you, so if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer those.
Great, stand by, and we'll start with questions, and I'll look to my right. Maybe Mr. Heading can start us off with some questions, and then, Marles?
Be happy to.
And then we'll work back this way.
Thank you.
Just questions at this point. Once we conclude questions, we'll open a public comment, and then go into discussion.
Thank you, Mr., is it Kramer?
Yes.
Correct. For that presentation, very clear, concise, and I appreciate the report. Thank you, Craig, for your staff report, also very clear, got the message, don't get into the details yet, so I'm gonna abide by that. Came through four times, and I got them. So, I'm gonna just stick to the high-level stuff. First question is page 8, not getting into the detail, promised. Page 8, my question is, to what extent is internal equity evaluated between different job types, like police officer versus associate planner, just as an example of internal equity evaluations and how that occurs?
That's a great question. I mean, that is really one of the, it's a good example, perhaps, as to why we believe in surveying typically up to about 2, 60% to 2/3 of all job classifications, for one reason, because the data is out there. In the public sector, we have the luxury of obtaining the data, because the data is public information, and we can therefore obtain it. Your example is a good reason why market data is very important. Your example is a good reason why market data is very important, because that is a guideline to, to help the city set compensation levels. What I'm getting at here is, is that we would not necessarily look at trying to draw relationships or internal equity principles between two classifications that are so diverse and different as a police officer compared to an associate planner. So that it might be an example where we would rely a little bit more on the market data. We look at relationships throughout the, you know, all of the police classifications, for example, from, from, starting with police officer all the way to commander, as an example. Same on the fire side, you know, looking at all the harbor classifications. You might sometimes look at a relationship between an associate planner level and an associate engineer level. So those would be the kinds of internal equity types of alignments that we would look for.
Good, thank you. On page 10, I noted that, well, my question is this, what, what is the typical span within rage, ranges, lowest step to highest step? Not between, but within?
The, the most sort of traditional compensation structure in the public sector that we still find is a five-step system, and for almost, I think for almost all job classifications, except for a couple of exceptions, the city has that currently. And the most typical differential between steps is 5%, which leads to a, a minimum and a maximum step that are about 2.5%, I'm sorry, 21.5% apart.
Great, thank you for that. What about comparison of non-salary-related issues like benefits? Of course, retirement is pretty standard, but health, vision, dental, stuff like that, is that part of this process, or will that be a separate process that we will look at? I know this is a salary survey, I guess maybe that's a staff question?
Sure, I'll hop on that. The COF has done a great job on a, essentially a limited budget that we gave them. We, we all decided to do a salary survey or compensation survey, it's really a salary survey, and not a classification and comp survey, which probably would have been a $130,000 or $40,000 instead of a $20,000 event. So, so this is primarily, or really exclusively, a salary survey, and that's one of the reasons that we intend to come, for staff to come back to you with this nearly exact same presentation, but with some additional analysis of, look, for the staff to do the work now and the next month, or what are some of the key other compensation items. And we can do that pretty easily, comparing ourselves to the, the six cities locally. So, and those are likely, the two, the two big ones, we, we could go sort of endlessly on this, on what's the boot allowance between Slow and Atascadero and Moro Bay, we probably don't want to go there, but we should look at health, and we should look at any employer contributions to employee retirement. Those are probably the two biggest ones that could skew us a little bit from the other cities. Otherwise, most of the other items in compensation are likely gonna be smaller things such as, such as allowances, maybe some longevity increases in, in some of those. Does that help?
Yeah, it does, and I just, I wanted, wanted to just note that I agree with your comment on boot allowances, so. So my next question is, I understand your market basket, I think I also understand why it was selected in terms of the cohort that you used to do your data analysis. My question to staff would be, where did our last 10 hires come from? What area, approximately? Not, you know, if you don't have it exactly, I mean, was it a broader market outside of what we've compared to, or was it internal to the cohort that we looked at for the salary survey?
I'm gonna jump on that one, too, and then I'll have Dana or somebody correct me. So let's use today, or last two weeks. We hired six new employees, or identified six employees to come into wastewater treatment and collection area. The four, we identified five that we wanted to hire, I'm sorry, we had a top five for, for four of the lower level, level positions. Out of those top five, four were local, and one of the ones that we wanted to hire was from out of, out of the area and chose not to make the move now. I'm not at all suggesting that was based on salary, but it goes to your, it just answers your question. So of five who, of our top five for lower-level wastewater positions, operators one, two and three, four of four are from the local area. The manager is relocating from Eldorado Hills, and one of the senior-level operators, the lead worker, is relocating from Santa Paula. That's probably, generally, although I'd say, a fair number of our police officers come from Tulare County Sheriff's Department.
Good reason for that.
And there's a, there's, I, I think there's probably a different function going on there also. It's not, it's not necessarily salary-related, but, but, and then, I think that probably gets to, to your question.
Yeah, I, I just, as a commentary, too, that I just might submit that if you looked at management hires, the majority, I think, recently came from outside of your comparative area, and there may be subsectors within the data sets that you have that might require further analysis. I know I'm, I'm getting into comments, but I think that's what I was alluding to with my question, I'll, I'll save that. My last question is this, what does our exit interview data show with regard to compensation and issues with regard to people leaving? I assume we do exit interviews and have data on reasons why people leave the organization?
We, we do. Read one, read one yesterday, and, and that one circled that, in his estimation, salary was commensurate with his duties. I, some may disagree with this general assessment, but I think generally, we, we don't have a significant exit problem that's based primarily on salaries. That said, if we have one of those, it's sort of too late. And so my, my, without going into compensation policy, the, it's, it's good that we don't have that problem now, and we may not want to, it would be best if we didn't get to the point where we had a problem that we were then reacting to. So keeping sort of in the market is probably a good thing to do, but, and that said, there are absolutely some employees who have left based primarily on salary. I, so it's all over the place, but, 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 yeah, that's probably a better, shorter, more concise answer, some yes, some no.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, John. Marles?
Okay, well, I had actually emailed a couple of questions, excuse me, to Mr. Buckingham earlier today, and they were answered in the presentation, so I will not re-ask those. I just wanted to ask, excuse me, you mentioned that you ID benchmark classifications and that you actually collected data on those, and I noticed that they were not in the report. I'm just wondering what those showed you, and you had mentioned some things about budget and number of employees to budget, which I think would be helpful for us to see how those comparison cities do compare on those variables.
Yeah, the, the slide that I prepared regarding the factors that we would normally look at was sort of, a little bit sort of hypothetical, since the comparator agencies had been selected. I think, I would imagine those are probably, those have been, have been consistently surveyed by the cities, my understanding, in the past. And there's something to be said for consistency, so identifying a survey market and then consistently surveying that market makes sense because that keeps you consistent with that market. Point being is that we did, the consultant, actually, we didn't do the analysis for, in, in order to determine the.
So we don't, we don't have that data, is that correct?
Correct. We don't have the data.
Right, right. But it might be helpful to see if the cities that we're talking about actually, how they do compare when you're doing a different kind of city, of study. Correct?
Sure, absolutely. I, I would agree that it is helpful to see how cities compare, certainly, what, what I would say about the, what we consider the, the general labor market is usually the local geography. So typically, where we start when we make recommendations, we would literally look at a map to see where a client agency is located, and then sort of draw a circle around that and identify which agencies or how many agencies are within that geographic vicinity that we should consider surveying. And then sometimes you have to go outside of that circle only because the client agency may provide unique services that are not found in neighboring agencies and things of that nature, but.
Which is what happened in, in this one, where you went outside for the Harbor Department employees.
Correct.
Okay, and I'm assuming that we are sort of on the small end, and, and so we really didn't have a lot of cities to actually compare to. I mean, we, we don't have that many cities in San Luis Obispo County, so they may be very disparate in terms of size and budgets and those sorts of things, which, so it would be helpful to know because it would help us interpreting the results that we're getting. That wasn't really a comment, I don't think. Maybe it was started out as a question. Sorry if it was. And I just would like to ask Mr. Buckingham, what current policy is with respect to giving promotions, raises? Do you, is it possible to jump someone a couple of steps based on performance, or is it more systematic to just give the next step raise?
Great, great question. First, just to go back one, for everybody's understanding, it was sort of in the exchange that we just had, but the, one of the primary reasons that the city identified the six comparable, comparator cities in the county is because that's written into our MOUs with our various unions. So that is, that's written in the MOU, and, and so we defaulted to that. It, it's also helpful that that's normally where you, where you start is with the, the closest cities. And just slightly more on that, certainly, some of the cities in our, in our basket are of significantly different size than, size than Moro Bay, and as you get into compensation policy, and then you can, we, we should consider that, and, and, I'll see what that. The, the city's current policy is the, the city manager is the authority to move employees from step to step, and the city over, I think it's fair to say, over many years, essentially had a practice, I would not say a policy, but a practice that was generally not performance-based, but was, and was, I'm being, generalizing here, but generally not performance-based in, in the sense of a performance merit system that some agencies use, mostly private. And it was, the general practice, I believe, over many years, has been with good performance to move employees up a step each year. Fair enough, that's been the, the practice, that, I'll put it this way, that was certainly the practice when I arrived two years ago, and I started asking a lot of questions about that. And that is something that I think is worth addressing as we go forward. But based partially on where our salary equity is right now, I thought it was more important for us in our, in our negotiation with, in our relations with our labor unions, to go through this process, go through a salary, a compensation study process, have a compensation policy, and then to address the, the, or practice or procedure for promotion within salary steps.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, great, great, Marles. Matt?
Just looking at the recommendation here, and the end result is, so question is, is timeline. We have a study, and you were talking about the various next steps, looking going forward in the next three or four months. Could you explain just on those next steps in timeline, please?
Yes, sir. So we have on the council agenda for the January the 10th to have a, the next level of this discussion, and so that's why the staff report sort of says, not to, this is really a presentation of data, to let that start to soak in, and then perhaps to, staff will do some analysis on this data over the next month, bring it back to the council on January 10th, have perhaps deeper discussion then, and then come back, perhaps, right now, we're planning to come back at the end of January for discussion number one on compensation policy, and then hopefully to have compensation policy discussed again, and perhaps a compensation policy approved at the first meeting in February or the second meeting in February, so that we can meet the intent of council goal 10D, which was to have a policy in place to inform labor union negotiations that will really start to get in the thick of in late February and early March. And it's important to note, I think, that we intentionally negotiated one-year contracts this year with our labor unions so that we could go through this process, and, and then, and get a, a compensation policy in place, and then we can perhaps enter multi-year negotiations going forward.
No, and you, you totally anticipated my next question, it was in terms of those labor negotiations. So, thank you, that's perfect, thank you.
Brad?
Dave, you did this study as a result of an MOU agreement?
No, the MOUs defined which, what the comparator, comparator cities would be. So in the MOUs, it says, for any compensation studies that the city or the unions do, we will use, we agree to use these cities, and for fire, it adds some of the additional districts in there. But we, as a, I believe, I, I recommended to the council that we include this goal on our goals for this year, and I did that based really on the conversation we just had with, with Marles, and as I started to look at our compensation process in general, my assessment was, we needed to have a policy so that when we sit down at the negotiation table and somebody says, I think we need a 10% raise across the board for, for SEIU, that we have something, some policy to guide us that says, well, the city's policy is we're going to be at this point, at the median, at, at two steps below the median, three steps above the median, whatever. But so, so that was part of it, and then part of it also was this idea of, of merit-based, and as I said, so this was brought by staff, recommended as a goal to the council, and I think through the negotiation processes, the council likely internalized a bit and saw that it would be a good thing to have a compensation policy.
And maybe this question is premature to that, but I'm wondering what the employees expect who are being paid at higher than the median, or the employees who are being paid substantially lower than the median?
So what, what I've communicated to our employees, and I wrote them a note again today, to reiterate what I've said, probably at three town halls and in numerous meetings with employee, with small groups and with unions, is the leadership of the city, the council and the city manager, were committed to embarking on this process, to do a compensation study and to, that, that may result in a compensation policy. That's step one. First step, do the study, then determine if we want to have a policy to guide our compensation in years ahead, it would be step two. And then I always make it very clear, then that policy is gonna come into direct competition with the city's budget, and it may be five years, it may be 10 years, or maybe 15 years. I usually don't say 15. And it may be five years, it may be 10 years or maybe 15 years, I usually don't say 15. I usually say it may be five years or seven years or 10 years that it takes for, depending on where the council sets the policy goal level out, to, to reach that goal level. Part of your question was what about salaries that may be over the median? And I think the staff report actually addressed that, but the typical way to address that is to wire rate those salaries and to not increase them over time as others until the market catches up with that salary. And then another item that we will have to, we will have to consider in our compensation policy discussions or budget discussions more likely is if you have a engineer who's at 20% below median and somebody who's at 7% below median, how do we deal with that? And do we catch the worst off up first and then get everybody to an equal level of, of below whatever the, the policy level is and then start eking everybody up? Or do we go with, with equal equity adjustments? So there's a couple of things and I say we in that, it is the councils, obviously the councils will set the policy, but then I think we'll work together in how to implement that as we go forward.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I have a couple of questions for Mr. Kramer on, so in the analysis, we've had some discussion internally with the city about the percent of salary versus the general fund. So as an example, with, you know, some cities having a policy saying, we operate at 77% salary to general fund or 80%. Do you understand what I mean by that?
Sure.
So when, are there, so when you compare, when we're using comparison cities, is there any way to analyze what those other cities have as policies to establish that level of percent salary to their general fund?
Yeah.
And, I mean, to that, I mean, do you have experience with that as well?
You know, very limited, I would say. I would imagine it's certainly a data point that could be collected. I couldn't tell you from, from, from really specific experience that I would have personally that there are a lot of policies that I've seen in regards to that. So I could certainly imagine that some agencies do have a policy or practices around that. I don't see it so much with, with cities, you know, work for transportation housing authorities that who receive federal funding and sometimes there are requirements around how much of their total budget, you know, their administrative costs can be, but it's more of a directive from their funding sources than an actual policy they put in place. So, so very limited examples that I could provide for you.
From a policy standpoint, is that, is that a data point that's, that's analyzed?
Not typically, not typically something we analyze.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, could I just add one thing on that, that, that can get, here's an example of how that can be a challenge, is the Moore Bay Fire Department salaries are probably $2 million a year. Pismo Beach salaries for fire is zero, but they have a contract with Five Cities Fire. So, so there can be some really significant variables in that. So if you look at Pismo, there's $2 million a year that we spend on salary for fire, but that doesn't fall under salary for them, that falls as a, as an external contract.
Okay. And then the salary study and you have, on page nine, you have pay philosophy. So we've had some discussion about philosophy versus policy. And just, just want to, in general terms, so it seems as though the policy seems more firm versus a philosophy, but what's the experience, do you have any experience with other agencies with differing policy versus philosophy? Can you speak to that?
A bit, did I say a bit, only because it is, I certainly have had an observation that, you know, not that many agencies appear to have a written policy in place or a, you know, a governing body directive necessarily. I would certainly say that, that it's, the most common practice I see is to look at market medians because most agencies do want to understand what at least the, sort of the midpoint of the market is. I sometimes see different targets by agencies that do have a workforce that tends to be more specialized or diverse or performs the types of assignments that require specialized training and skills and things of that nature. Certainly, I would say because of the recession that we've all experienced, there is, I would say that public agencies have become quite conservative. So I think market median is certainly a pretty strong reference point that many agencies look like. But again, to, you know, I'm being sort of vague only because you can't, you may not always find a, a sort of a policy written in stone or a council resolution, for example, that a lot of agencies have. So it's, you know, every agency does it a little bit differently and often it's simply done by practice.
Okay. And then there are some, some of the questions from my colleagues about the exit interview data, benchmarking data. Can that kind of material come back the next, can we get that, some of those questions inserted into the next phase of this information for us? I mean, I think, Marla, you were asking questions specifically about the benchmarking data. Is that something we can come, come back with at the next phase of this?
I'll probably point, point back to staff on that unless of course, you know, we're always happy to help if needed.
I, I think that, so exit interview data, absolutely easy, we can do that internally. I don't know if that's easy, but Craig, I'm sure we'll get it done. The, I was trying to follow that benchmarking discussion and, and what I think I heard was it was about the benchmarking for selecting comparator cities. And since our comparator cities were essentially defined for us because they were in our MOU, that you didn't go through that process of benchmarking to select comparator cities. So he doesn't have that data. If we wanted to go back out to choose non-local comparator cities that are outside of what our MOU says, first I would have to consider implications, MOU implications and go back and review that language. But then also it would be essentially a redo at this study in order to go back out and choose Scotts Valley, Grass Valley and three other valleys to, to do the, so that's doable, but that's where we would likely need to go back and, and rehire COF or somebody to help us do that.
Well, if I could just leap in here, that actually wasn't what I was talking about.
Great.
I was talking about just gathering that data for the cities, for the six cities in our study so that we could understand better how we compare on these other variables and therefore how well these other cities are comparable. So we could understand ability to pay versus size and all of those factors and, and percent of salaries to budget, questions like that, just so that it would be just a simple table.
Absolutely, that is, we can absolutely do that.
Okay, thanks.
Good. You provided that to us. Oh, I'm sorry? You provided some of that to us in an email.
Yeah, I started to do a little bit of that this, this week and it was really back of the envelope stuff, but there's a number of ways that we could compare. We want to refine that, but we could take what general fund revenues are divided by population, that's one way to, to measure the, the wealth of cities. We should probably also take general fund revenue divided by miles of streets and, because that's a, that's a significant, but so there are a number of ways that we can do that and we will do that.
Yeah, median household income is a good one and median housing value because that gives you a nice, a sense of the tax base.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we got that covered, thanks. And then the compensation policy is something that you talked about bringing back at a later date. Is there an opportunity to bring kind of a draft compensation policy back earlier for that, that review? When I'm looking at the timeline in the staff report, just looking at the possibility of, you know, instead of getting it all the way at the end, if we could have some sort of draft to look at during the step, this, this process to view or, just, just want to get a sense there.
Yes.
I'm just asking because I, you know, without, without any idea what this policy is going to look like, you know, is it going to be something we expand upon? I mean, is there the ability to kind of have a first blush at it and, you know, is it going to be super refined at the very end of this? Just trying to get, you know, information early on is, is, was my question.
Sure.
So, yeah.
Yeah, that is really helpful. Thank you, thank you. So we did not want to rush this process, but intentionally as we discussed, wanted to just let this out there and let it soak so that we're not rushing through this.
Yeah.
Also, based on, on, Marla's is a great question, we probably need to, I need to refine a little bit what we mean when we say compensation policy because that, that could then start to talk about, about merit-based increases, a merit-based system, all of those things. I think what, what is needed right now is to essentially consider where Moore Bay wants to stack up in our labor market, at the 50th percentile, at the 30th percentile, at the 80th percentile, be number five of seven cities. And, but that, that's, that is doable, I think, between now and the end of February. And we can certainly start to put some of, put some of those ideas together and have those at least in the, in the next staff report where we look more at policy, where we look, where we study some more, but it can be in there so that you can give us input on that.
Yeah, thank you.
That'd be great.
Good.
That's helpful.
Okay, that, that concludes the questions. Thank you, Mr. Kramer. I don't have any speaker slips, I'm going to span the audience, don't see any, we have one hand for, so if you have a moment, please, and maybe during discussion if there's anything else. Mr. Woodson, don't have a speaker slip, a public speaking, a public comment is open?
Yeah, Bill Woodson, I'm here for WRF, but I, I have to talk a little bit here. There's no doubt in my mind that retaining high caliber employees for the city of Moore Bay is paramount to you and to Buckingham and others, but especially to me. And I think that we've had, we have a pretty good record of that. But you're opening a real can of worms because I would be interested to know what your employee attrition rates in these various classes are. And I think this is very critical on their compensation as well. I think you need to know things like what percentage of the retirement plan are you paying them versus bucks and, and health plans? And I know that there's several unions in California that are threatening to strike because they got a 3% to 4% raise, but yet their health plan costs are outweighing that raise. So there's a lot of issues here that you're going to have to address. I think what's important is the attrition rate and also when you go out to hire, what is the candidate pool? Is it, what is the quality and quantity of that candidate pool? Is there a brush of people or is there no people here willing to come? So then merit raises, merit raises is critical for retaining quality people, not only for the money, but for the recognition, you know? Hey, I really like the way you're handling this element of the city and this is the way we can show that appreciation. But then that, on the other side of that, takes, what you need to know is maybe you need to employ performance criteria and evaluations on a periodic basis. So good luck to you guys, but it ain't just money and we need good people. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. We hope to have you back at the next, the next session of this discussion. All right. Hopefully we got all those notes and comments on that. And without any more public comment, I'll close public comment and bring it back for discussion. And I'll start it off once again with Mr. Heading on discussion.
Yes, thank you, staff, for your report and your input and, excuse me, the answering of the detailed questions. Thank you, Mr. Kramer, for your presentation. You, you can sit, I don't have any specific questions for you. You may be seated if you'd like and if the mayor so is inclined to let you. So I, I think that good data drives good decisions, first of all, or great data drives great decisions. And, and I think this is quite good data. Bill makes a good comment in that, you know, total compensation is important. It's not just salary and I know that this was a study to just look at that, but, but benefits become an important aspect for people, percent of healthcare costs that they pay so forth and so on, retirement allowances, et cetera. So it's really total compensation package that, that I believe is important. Philosophically, you know, I believe that human capital can provide a significant return on investment and we need to think of our people as human capital that are an investment that we need to make in, in order to get a return on that investment. And by that, I don't mean to make it dehumanizing, but I do need to say that I feel it's extremely important to retain and recruit quality people to be competitive. I mean, you just have to be competitive in the marketplace. I'm proud that the council set a goal and, and staff set a goal to do this study proactively. I think that's extremely important, not to do it in reaction to some kind of threat from a union, et cetera. And so I think we're taking the appropriate steps in establishing guidelines. I'm not going to say a very detailed, specific policy, but some general guidelines for, for compensation and where we want to be. The thing I want to call out is what I consider to be organizational capacity and that is the availability of funding within the organization to be able to meet the needs of a compensation study and any kind of policy or parameters that might be set as guidelines. And I think that's important to remember. If the organization doesn't have significant capacity to meet the needs to get to parity with regard to, you know, being at the median for all, all positions, certainly that most organizations don't. There is a place where we can land and I think we need to think about that. And I know we're going to get further data with regard to organizational capacity with which to move forward on, on these kinds of ideas. I think a solid compensation program that is competitive will lead us to improve our ability to recruit and retain quality staff, but it's not the only thing. I believe that nothing beats an organization that values staff, encourages staff, recognizes staff and offers them opportunities for continuous learning and organizational challenge and upward mobility. And that speaks to quality leadership within the organization. So, you know, a lot of studies have shown it's not just money that motivates people. There's a lot about the place that they work, the culture that they work in and the leaders that they work for. If it's an encouraging, nurturing environment, it makes a lot of difference. I do believe we need to have a robust exit interview process. I know we possibly do have one and that data may come back, but even golden parachute retirees should be evaluated and their input should retirees should be evaluated and their input should be received about the organization because I think that data is very important. And so I think overall, this is a great first step in beginning to look at some guidelines. And I am very, very much looking forward to getting further information and moving this process forward in a proactive manner. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Marla's?
Okay, well, I want to agree with much of what my colleague just said. I certainly agree with the idea that we really need to look at organizational capacity and we need to look at other factors beyond just salary. I really appreciate the effort that went into this study, but I have had similar experience. My background is in research and I have done benchmarking studies. And so I know, as Mr. Heading just mentioned, that you can't base policy on bad data and bad information. So I do have some concerns about this study that I just wanted to bring forward so we can consider how we might deal with them. And it concerns the methodology and the design of the study. First of all, I am concerned about the fact that, yes, I understand we needed to use these cities that are in Morro Bay because, I mean, around Morro Bay in San Luis County, and that that was actually part of labor negotiations. But I don't think that all of our job classifications, that that is the relevant market. And I think we need to make a distinction between those job categories that where we actually do get most of our employees from the surrounding area, but certainly there are a number of these job classifications where we are going to be recruiting outside of the area, in fact, even nationally. So for those jobs, I think we need a different benchmark, a different median, a different, something else to look at besides just, and then I'll get to my second point because it's related, and that is the small number of comparator cities. And I know that you recommended 12 as a minimum. We had six, and for some of the jobs that we're looking at, we had one, up to six. And that's just not sufficient, I don't think, to get, in fact, it's too small a number to even calculate a median. So you can't use the measure of the percent variance to the median if you've only got two comparisons. So I do think that we're going to have to do some more work on this to improve the data if we're going to use it to formulate some kind of a policy of getting employees up to median salaries. And I mentioned some other things about looking at some of the capacity to, organizational capacity, which is what Mr. Heading mentioned. And I think we need to have that data so we can understand better our capacity to pay and to enact a policy that the employees can really count on. Because I think we need to have valid results and we need to have data that's good before we move forward with a policy. So I do have a couple of, I'm concerned that this timeline is rather short for achieving that, collecting the additional information that might be needed. I would suggest a first step is to look at the data and perhaps separate out some of those job classifications where the data is at least, at least it's comparable, it pertains to the market, they're jobs that you recruit locally, and we only have six comparisons. So let's look at those, separate those out, and then decide what kind of data we might need to get better information on those job classifications that are left. I also appreciate looking at some of the exit interviews so we get a sense of how many people are leaving because of compensation-related issues. I honestly think that the Citizens Finance Committee would be very helpful in looking at this study and perhaps making some other suggestions of how we might proceed. I realize that that would delay the timeline somewhat, but I think they have expertise, they have knowledge, they have skills, and I think they might be able to make some useful comments. They might even be able to do some of the research. I know that we have done some research, benchmarking research as part of that committee, and so that would also be my recommendation. But I'm anxious to hear what other council members have to say and what the staff response is, and so that's my comments.
Okay, thanks, Marla's. Matt?
After listening to my colleagues over here, I think, Marla, you made a very good point, the Citizens Finance Committee, if we can't necessarily send it back to have the study enlarged upon monetarily. So other than that, I don't know, Dave, when you talk, as this comes back to you and you guys start talking about the timeline, because the point about using this for next year's salary negotiations is very clear to me. And I don't know if we could do all this in that timeframe. But however, maybe that's, go through this, finish up, that could be one recommendation to see how quick we could get that back. And other than that, I mean, I'm ready to see this roll because looking at it from last year, I think this is a great idea, especially looking forward with our employees. And so, that's it for me.
Red? I agree that getting more data is going to give us a better product, but I am concerned that we got the data that we could afford to pay for, is that correct? And if we want to double the number of cities researched, we're going to have to allocate more money up here, is that correct?
Generally, yes, sir. Staff can certainly do the things we talked about in comparison to the slow county cities, but if we were to go back out and to expand to 12, and those are all legit points, absolutely, but if we go back out to expand to 12, we're just pulling our finance department together in other areas, and we've got budgeting coming up at the same time, so we would likely need to get help.
And doing that is going to add to the timeline, so I guess, what is our real goal? Is it to meet the stated goal that we have, which is to be ready for employee negotiations here in March?
I would certainly like us to do that. And that was, the goal 10D refers to MOU negotiations. There is, I think, a reasonable expectation on the part of our employees that we were going to work through this in time to affect those negotiations. And also, this might help if I might, the mayor's great question about, you know, could we sort of have some of this compensation policy discussion front-loaded? Actually, we could have done this completely differently. We could have, you could have got together and said, where do we want our compensation policy to be? What's the number? And then we could have gone and done the survey and figured out where we were. So they're related efforts, but they're not necessarily reliant on each other until you come to the end and start updating the salary table. So what's in my mind right now, and this might help some of your discussion, is that this, some additional research, and not necessarily outside, but we don't have to be finished with the compensation study and all of the evaluation. And the CFAC could look at this in January and in February as the council is determining what the policy will be. And then those things can come together, a fuller research product with the policy. And if those things come together at the end of February, we'll be in pretty good shape. And I know we're in discussion, sorry. We recognize that there are absolutely some positions in here where the comparisons were only one or two. And that's the kind of work that staff was anticipating doing to, so a fair number of them have five and six comparisons, and those are pretty solid. But certainly, there's some outliers there that we want to take a close look at and say, hey, if this one only has two comparisons, then we need to do, we need to do some more research. And that will really, really come as we start, as you've established a policy, and then we're trying to figure out to build the right salary table based on your policy to look at some specific positions.
Okay, you've mentioned salary, and we're talking about compensation, and to me, those are two different things. And I'm not sure that we, that our data is complete if we're looking only at salary and not considering the other compensation, the other benefits that are part of the total compensation packages. So I'm not sure that we even have enough data to build a compensation
Policy.
Policy that will stand up to analysis. So, so that's my thought. That's all I have.
Okay. So, a couple of things. We talked about next steps, and Marla's, I appreciate your comments as well. I did have an earlier conversation today with Craig, Mr. Smolinger. Thanks, Craig, for taking my questions. And I think we all, and I've asked the question before, as we're going through our goal process, goals and objectives, and just, you know, achieving things that we're setting out to do. However, as we're reviewing this and we are wanting more analysis, if indeed, that's where we feel we need to go, and I think if we truly want a good compensation policy, then I would agree that we should be doing the due diligence to do that. It's not only fair for the community, but it is fair for our employees. So, but brings me back to capacity. We have a lot of things we're doing, and I know we're, you know, thank you for building the organization, the department that you're going through, and we have, you know, we still have some ways to go to get there. So I have to have that brief discussion to recognize how hard we're, you know, pushing ourselves on this. And if we are, you know, indeed want this data, if we want to consider the best methodology and how we do that, and do we see if we can expand our capacity within, you know, internally within our department, considering everything we're doing? Or what would the cost be to, you know, collect the data further if we were to hire it out? And I think that's a valid discussion, if we're going to have that discussion, because, you know, we still need to get to our next steps timeline and confirming the draft timeline and next steps. And, you know, we're talking about trying to dovetail some policy information together with all this. You know, certainly not muddying the water, but just want to have that discussion of what's important for council, for data, and then the best methodology in which we can do that. And then just understanding where it falls in the timeline. And those are my talking points, and I'd kind of, I'd like to, you know, wrap it up and see where we can get from there. And be mindful of time, we still have a couple more issues to get through, so I just want to keep us mindful of that. And I'm looking for two, and if I just go with John and then Marla since he's nearest. John, go ahead.
So maybe I could maybe help a little bit. And I very much appreciate what Marla said because that is her area of expertise in terms of looking at these kinds of data sets and, you know, statistical validity to information. And I just want to rein it in a bit and say that, that I believe we have some fairly good benchmark data. There may be a few positions, and I alluded to management, which is always a broader market, that might be a little bit different. And I think if we just sat down and looked at those, had staff look at those, and tried to identify those that might not be well-served by the cohort that we have used here, that would be a step. I hesitate to bog down the Citizens Finance Committee, they're extremely busy with a lot of budget stuff right now, and I would normally say send it to them, but I think time is of the essence here. I do think we want some well-informed data to go into negotiations, it's a promise that we have made. And so as we do that step to identify the few positions that might involve a broader market or a slightly different market comparison first, two, looked at total compensation, got some ideas about what Red had talked about, and that was, it's not just salary, it's benefits as well, and had some comparative information there. Then looked at organizational capacity. I mean, if we set this as a policy, you know, it's going to cost $50 million and it's not going to happen. So that would be the next step. And then come with, we're the policy setters, but just an outline of that information would allow us, I think, to just send some, to design some benchmarks that we could utilize for establishing where we want to be with compensation. And I think a broad-based statement and/or paragraph or so is really all we need, not an extensive policy outlining how you move, what percent you move within the scale, et cetera. That's a staff issue. So those are my comments, thank you.
Marla's?
Yeah, I think I, if I understand correctly, I think I pretty much agree, and that was kind of the direction I was heading, that I think we have, we should separate out those positions where we don't have really good data and try to get some more data. And I don't know that it necessarily means going out to other cities, there might be some statewide averages for certain kinds of managerial positions especially that we could try to find and plug in. So we had just some better data for those, and I think they mostly are management positions. They're unique positions, and therefore, there aren't that many in, and it's also true about the harbor department because that's another area where we didn't have good comparison data. So that would be a first step for me also, is separating out. And I think we might even be able to move forward more quickly with the ones where we had enough data to, it might even help with the, we could even maybe come up with a policy for that group of employees, a group of job classifications, and then later come back for the second set. And I don't know, within the MOU negotiations, I'm not sure how large a group that affects of city employees, so that may affect what I just said.
Any comments for us and guidance?
Sure, this is a great discussion, thank you. I just, just for fun, I really did some, a quick guess, a guest analysis of, and I looked at all of these lines that are 5% or more below the median, just chose that. Everyone, almost all of the lines that only have one or two comparator, first of all, about 20 of them have five or six comparators, and just, I guess, 11 have fewer than, four or fewer. But those 20 represent more like 55 employees, because the one line of police captain, or I'm sorry, fire captain, well, there's four of those. Police sergeant, there's three of those. So Marla's point, that many of those outliers are really single positions, so we can, so probably 50 of, there's 50 employees represented in that group that are, that we have really good data on, and maybe 10 that we don't. And we can do that analysis on those 10 positions. And so I, if you're looking for a way ahead, we've got very good discussion from you. I think we have some good ideas and what we could bring back to you to really start to have a two-pronged discussion, both to start to get a little bit of information out there on salary, possible compensation policies. And I appreciated what I heard from Mr. Heading, was it doesn't, this time around, it doesn't have to be a 15-page document that addresses all those things, but if we can get a good start at it, I think that will be very helpful to our negotiations as we go forward, and then we can, and as I think everybody knows, wherever there is, we're not going to get there in the first year, and that's okay. And so we've got some time to at least start to refine, and we can refine better in the years ahead.
Okay, so with those comments, then, back to the recommendation, with all the information that we just talked, there's enough information and direction from council in their areas of concern to bring us back on the next step schedule that of concern to bring us back on the next step schedule that we're looking at right now?
I think, I think we're there as far as clarity on direction, as long as we're talking about going forward with kind of the draft timeline approach with the additional built-in data in there and not doing kind of the flip-flopped approach that Dave kind of brought up a little bit ago. So I guess a little bit of clarity on that end.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think that, the direction we're going, being just keep, not the flip-flop approach, but the same direction. Sorry.
Yes, definitely then. Thank you.
All right. So, okay, then circling back, we, you know, based on this, we can make a motion to receive the information presentation regarding the salary survey completed by Coffin Associates and include the stated discussion by council and direction and confirm the drafts timeline and next steps regarding the employee salary study information. Craig, just confirm with me that, you know, we've, even though we've had a lot of discussion, we didn't read and dot every single part of that in the motion, so, you know, we're good to go there?
Yeah, I believe you had general points of clarity going forward on direction, so.
Okay.
Generally.
Okay. So that would be the motion. Need a second?
Second.
Same motion by Mayor Aron, second by Councilmember Heading. Any further discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Can we take a, let's come back at 8:45 and then we'll start C2. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. All right, our next item on the agenda, item C2, we're going to, we're doing a little bit of reverse order tonight, but that's okay. Item C2 is a presentation and discussion of draft water reclamation facility master plan. And Mr. Nunley, Mr. Rickenbach, Mr. Livick, Mr. Buckingham.
Take it away.
Okay. All right. Good.
Okay. I'll take it. I'll take it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and welcome to the new members of the council.
Welcome, you guys. Thanks.
And so what we'd like to do tonight is a pretty important step in the process. We're at a milestone of sorts. We have a facility master plan to present to you, and that is essentially the cookbook that we will use to study in the environmental impact report for what will go on, or what could potentially go on out of the site. The point there being the EIR will study that, and through that process, we'll be able to refine that at some point. So we're really looking for any specific direction we'd like to carry forward down the line. So anything we get tonight and in the coming workshops and weeks and months, we'll take notes of all that, and that will play into a final facility master plan that ultimately will become the basis of the actual project that goes forward. That's a little basis for what we're doing this for. What we'd like to do, and we'll try to compress this a little bit because we know where some of your concerns are likely to lie, but what we want to do is a quick reminder of why we're doing this, how we got here, what the point is in the first place, things we've accomplished in the big picture. We have Matt Thomas from Black and Beach here, who will present the nuts and bolts of the facility master plan. And then Mike Nunley will go through some of the issues related to cost. We also want to briefly touch on some points we heard at WRFCAC last week and through correspondence over the last three or four weeks since we had a workshop about a month ago, which is very useful stuff for us. So, again, very briefly, the whole project, the reason we're doing this is because the Coastal Commission about three or four years ago said, we've got to put in a new project. So it was an opportunity the community took to say, if we're going to do that, how do we want to do that to maximize the benefits of that project? So, again, we've gone through, down this road quite a bit. We're producing tertiary disinfected wastewater, reclaiming the water, cost effectiveness is important. We considered the concept of composting. That's not really a great option out here, but other things might be. Energy recovery was a goal we wanted to consider, treating for contaminants of emerging concern, the potential to allow for other municipal uses. We've been talking about the corpyard there, ensuring compatibility with the neighbors and be operational in five years. Now, given all that, that's a lot of things we, that was on our plate to consider, and those are things that are addressed in the facility master plan. Even though the facility master plan is focusing on the water reclamation facility, it's trying to be mindful of the other community goals that are still on the table. Now, as I say, this is a process that we've kick-started in the current version in 2013. We've gone through many studies to get to this point. Don't want to go through this in detail, but to show we've done a lot of work to get here, to get to this site, and studied sites in the Morro Valley, Choro Valley, and elsewhere, and ultimately even changed course a bit when Cayucus went on their own project in their own way a little over a year ago. So those have all played into the process so far. This year, of course, we were focused early on in the Morro Valley and now in the Choro Valley at the South Bay Boulevard site, where ultimately we're at. And because we feel that's a very achievable place to meet the five-year timeframe, within a cost timeframe that also meets the other goals that we laid out. In June, you selected South Bay Boulevard site to study further, and that's what we've been doing since. Since then, we've done a lot of technical work on that site, biology, cultural resources, geotech, survey work, and so forth, and EIR scoping meeting this summer, memorandum of understanding with a property owner if we go forward, and that's all very recent. Now, here we are at the facility master plan. We presented that at a workshop last month and at WRFCAC last week, and here we are today to get any further refinement from you. The next steps down the line, and we'll come back to this at the end, is the water reclamation plan. That's what do we do with the water? We're working those issues out right now. Mike can touch on that a bit later. Releasing a draft EIR later in the summer and a final EIR, which will refine this project and get much more input on it at the end of next year. So next year is all about studying this facility master plan and the master reclamation plan. From there on out, we're looking at getting contracts out and starting to build the project in 2018, 19, and have it operational in 2021. That's our five-year goal. We're on target. We are on schedule. So here's some things we've learned now, so far through the process in broad terms, that we can build a water reclamation facility at South Bay Boulevard, and it will meet community project goals. We do know that having a total project, that is to say, not just reclamation-ready, that was the original concept, but have reclamation in place by 2021. And that's about two years ahead of schedule, what we originally had laid out. We do know that as a possible reclamation opportunity, groundwater injection and extraction appears to be feasible. Mike can talk a bit about that, but we're getting ahead of ourselves a bit, but that's on the reclamation side of things. But that's, that's good news. We also know that the water, that the project can provide for recycled water that will supplement the city's water supply and provide water independence ultimately. That's a goal. That's why it's a water reclamation facility. That figures into the long-range costing of this, which Mike will talk about a bit in a bit. And there's a lot of advantages of accelerating that recycled water component. By doing that, it makes it potentially eligible for more grant money because it's a recycled water project. Long-term construction savings could occur because you're compressing the timeframe, and the reduction in state water use is a possible, a possibility earlier, and that would lead to potential cost savings down the road. We have some, this is a very quick overview on costs. We'll get back to this in more detail later, but the estimated cost without recycled water, we've been talking about a range of $114 to $136 million, but when you add the recycled water component and make it operational, it's a range of $125 to $168 million. Those are huge ranges. Mike will talk about that in a bit, but wanted to prime the pump right there. One thing we've done here that's a little different than at WRFCAC, and at the workshop, we wanted to disaggregate water and sewer rates and costs and how that might play out. This table, I won't go into detail now, Mike will, and will want to come back to this, and it's an important one to reconsider as we go forward here. So at this point, what I'd like to do is really queue it up for Matt Thomas, who will go a bit into the facility master plan itself. We'll then have Mike talk, and then we'll, we'll come back to the next steps in the process. So here you go, Matt.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, thanks for having us tonight. And on behalf of Black and Beach, I do have to say again, thank you for the opportunity to have been a part of this project. It's been very gratifying to work with the staff, your program manager, the community, and yourselves. Whoa. Was that me? On the project, and we're looking forward to seeing it move forward from here. So what I want to do tonight is just give you a brief overview of the facility master plan. And the facility master plan, we want to lay out that it had some purposes in mind, which you can see on the screen. So we wanted to define a viable set of facilities to treat wastewater and create a water reclamation facility that meets all the community goals that you saw earlier. It supports the environmental process, like John just said. It's the next step for design and construction, and I think it's important here to point out that this is a, it's a master plan, so it represents something that's maybe between 5% and 10% of the total design. It's at a high level still, so there's a tremendous amount of work to be done, decisions to be made by you and the city staff on the components of the project. It's going to, this is a, this is a component of your overall water reclamation plan. Again, that's, John just touched on that. And then we set out to put together the cost estimate, so it supports your budgeting, and it was set out to engage community input. So when we've had community workshops and received public input at these meetings, that's all part of the project. So I want to, we're going to go through just the main components of the water reclamation, of the facility master plan, excuse me. So we had to identify viable alternatives for the water reclamation facilities themselves. We looked at cost-saving opportunities to offset costs of the project. We'll talk about that. A big focus was laying out a preliminary site plan. That was to help support the property acquisition process, as well as to give the community an idea of what the project might look like. We also developed some conceptual visualizations, which I'll show you momentarily, again, to give a sense of what the project might look like and to support the environmental review. And then, again, the construction costs, which Mike is actually going to go into. So just a quick organization of what I'm going to go through, wastewater treatment process alternatives, advanced treatment, solids handling slash energy recovery, the off-site facilities that are associated with the project, and then the site planning and the visual simulations. I'm just going to go through really the process we went through, so I'm not going to bore you with all the fascinating engineering detail that I love so much, and we'll take questions, obviously, later on if you have any questions about that. So just again, for context and for people that might be viewing at home, to remind everybody where the site is, this diagram shows where the existing wastewater treatment plant is and where the new water reclamation facility would go at South Bay Boulevard. And you can see relative to the downtown area of Morro Bay where those sit. With respect to the wastewater treatment component and the water reclamation component, the goal is to achieve the highest and best use of the, of this now new water resource for the city. So this diagram is depicting what those various end uses could be, all the way up to groundwater injection, and that would be used to augment the city's water supply, as John touched on before. All of that is going to be worked out in the master plan, the water, master water reclamation plan that's forthcoming early next year. To look at all of the wastewater treatment processes that could be viable for the project, we worked with city staff to identify some evaluation criteria that were used for determining which would be the most appropriate for the project, and to make sure that the project is aligned with the community goals, so you can read on the screen what those were. And then we looked at a wide, wide array of technologies for all of the process components of the project, again, to achieve the highest and best use for the water. We wanted to make sure they were proven and cost-effective. Earlier in the evening, we had some discussions about staff capabilities and making sure that those staff would be capable of managing a new treatment plant like this. So we were mindful of that as we went through this evaluation. And then we were also selecting processes that would be appropriate to plants of this size and scale. So on the screen are a couple of process flow diagrams. In the big picture, those two, we came up with two treatment process trains. One is based around a conventional treatment process called a sequencing batch reactor. The second is a combined secondary and tertiary level treatment using membranes called a membrane, membrane bioreactor. And both of these can achieve the end-use goals that the city is going to want to put forward in the master water reclamation plan. So that was the wastewater process. We should also talk about advanced treatment. So to go from providing tertiary treated water, which is a community goal, to something that can be used for those highest and best uses, such as agricultural irrigation or potable reuse options, you have to have an advanced treatment process. The selected process for that is microfiltration, reverse osmosis, and advanced oxidation. That's the accepted treatment process that's used for these types of applications. An example you may have heard of down in Orange County is the groundwater replenishment system. That's the process that they use, and it's a proven process, and that was what was recommended We also looked at opportunities for resource recovery and energy recovery, focused mainly on solids handling. So a byproduct of the wastewater treatment process, as you can imagine, is that there are solids left over. We looked at two potential opportunities. One was processing those solids to be able to create marketable products such as fertilizers, soil augmentation, that can be used for agriculture. There are a number of examples where that's done in California. And the second was to generate gas, natural gas that could be used to create energy. After it was all said and done, the cost of the facilities that are required to make those processes viable and implementable, they're too, they're too expensive relative to the return on the investment. So what was decided was to just carry on with your current practice, which is still reusing the biosolids in a positive way. It's through composting. What you do right now is send those biosolid materials to the Kern County Liberty Composting. That was determined to be the most economically viable option. So the plan is, in the FMP, is to carry that forward. We also looked at the off-site facilities that are required to support the project. Naturally, there needs to be a way to get the city's wastewater from where it goes now, which is down to the existing plant, up to the new water reclamation facility site. So after looking at a number of options, the plan sets forth the idea of a pump station in close proximity to the existing plant, a pipeline up to the water reclamation facility. And we looked at two options for where the pipeline could go. The And the second was to generate gas, natural gas that could be used to create energy. After it was all said and done, the, the cost of the facilities that are required to make those processes viable and implementable, they're too, they're too expensive relative to the return on the investment. So what was decided was to just carry on with your current practice, which is still reusing the biosolids in a positive way. It's through composting. What you do right now is send those biosolid materials to the Kern County Liberty Composting. That was determined to be the most economically viable option. So the plan is, in the FMP, is to carry that forward. We also looked at the off-site facilities that are required to support the project. Naturally, there needs to be a way to get the city's wastewater from where it goes now, which is down to the existing plant, up to the new water reclamation facility site. So after looking at a number of options, the, the plan sets forth the idea of a pump station in close proximity to the existing plant, a pipeline up to the water reclamation facility. And we looked at two options for where the pipeline could go. The selected option is on the Quintana Road on the west side of Highway 1. We also looked at an option where it would be, could be on the east side of Highway 1. It was determined that that alternative would be more expensive. It's actually more environmentally impactful. It was going to require some special construction that's more expensive to avoid those environmental impacts. And it actually is, goes through a higher elevation. So you would end up with the project being more expensive, both for capital cost and for O and M cost. So the Quintana Road, even though it will be in city streets, was determined to be the favorable option and more energy efficient. We also looked at a number of pump station sites. And you can see on this diagram all the sites that were looked at, and the FMP sets for two options that are both very close to the existing plant. That was done because it requires less infrastructure to be able to intercept your wastewater and capture it at the pump station and send it to the, the water reclamation facility. A couple of points to make on this. You've heard it, some comments, that we got comments during the community workshops and the WRF CAC meetings about the site and the potential for liquefaction. Those issues are covered in the FMP in the respect that we've provided costs in the cost estimating, so they're budgeted in. But the details behind how that would be accomplished would be done in later phases of the project. I mentioned that we're at about 5% to 10% design. It's that other 95% or 90% where those issues get handled and, in detail. It's also important to note that the Coastal Commission has been consulted about these locations. They understand that critical infrastructure gets put in floodplains all the time. It's just the nature of the business, and they've been supportive of having the pump station in that location. Last but not least, is to talk about the site planning and the visual simulator, visualizations that we created. Fraser Cycple Architects, I should give them credit for creating these visualizations. They did an excellent job, and you'll see those in a minute. Before we did that, we, they did a study of architectural styles to determine what might be the most appropriate for this setting and recommended that we go with a farm or a rural style, like a dairy, to match with that area, in the area between the Men's Colony and, and the city. So the color palette, the style of buildings that you'll see in these diagrams and figures look like that. And then there would also be landscape screening to further screen them visually. So here's an overview of the site. I showed you earlier a, a map of where the project is. This is now zoomed down a little bit, so you can see the water reclamation facility up at the top, and it's actually, you can think of it in two parts. The part at the top of that figure is the, the water, the wastewater treatment component, the process areas. The part, at the lower part of the site is the administration building, maintenance buildings, and then would be the site for if it was to go forward for a corp yard space. And you'll see that when we zoom in in a minute, which we're going to do right now. So here's the site zoomed in. We've pivoted the, the figure, so now the process facilities are on the right. The administration maintenance buildings are on the left, closest to Highway 1. This diagram shows without a corp yard, so there's a space to the, what would be the southwest side of the site that's left empty for a future facility. And then here it is with that corp, those corp yard facilities added in. Just to give you a sense of what it would look like from a perspective, and these perspectives, actually, the public would not normally see them. So here's a view looking south. You can see the rock and the stacks at the power plant, off in the distance and the ocean. Again, the, the process areas are on the right, and the administration and maintenance areas are on the left. And then here's that same view with the corp yard facilities added in. One more zoomed in view. Now we're closer to the, the process areas. You can see the, at that upper level on the right, all of the basins would be enclosed for odor control. There are a couple there that, that are open, but those are not processes that generate odors. The building in the middle that is open, and then the building to the left of that is the advanced water treatment process area to generate recycled water for potable reuse options. And then you can see in the distance, Highway 1. And then last but not least, we want to show you a couple of views of what it would look like from Highway 1. This is, these are the views that would actually be seen by the public. So this is a view looking back toward the plant from Highway 1, a little bit south and east of South Bay Boulevard. And then this is a view, now we've gone over South Bay Boulevard, and we're a little bit, I guess, north and west of it. And you can see the care facility there in the foreground. So the remainder of the presentation, I'm going to hand it over to Mike Nunley, who's going to talk about cost. And I was remiss in mentioning one other thing earlier in the presentation. The treatment plant process is based on sizing, based on flows. And you've heard comments here tonight about how those flows were calculated and established to determine the capacity of, of the plant. I did want to just make it clear that although the Wallace study, the sewer system master plan that was put together a number of years ago, it's over 10 years old now, was used as a reference point, and certainly was reviewed, the city staff gave us over 20 years of data, of flow measurements from the existing wastewater plant. And we did a completely independent calculation of the flows. So I just wanted to point that out, that we did have the Wallace study as a reference, but we did a completely independent calculation of that. And with that, I'll hand it over to-
Before you go to Mike, could you just flip back about six slides to the, the with and without, and, right, one more? So if I just could very briefly, we're trying to train ourselves not to say corp yard in this sense, but to say maintenance section. And the reason is, our existing corp yard includes the water treatment plant personnel and the collection system personnel and our maintenance section personnel and their equipment. This picture here shows the wastewater treatment plant, or, I'm sorry, the water reclamation facility in the top right, and then those lower buildings down in the bottom left. That is the home of both the treatment section personnel and the collection system personnel. So two-thirds of the corp yard is planned into this because, as we talked earlier, all of those folks are going to be cross-trained to run this, this water reclamation facility. So that is really two-thirds of our existing corp yard. And then if you go one slide more, that shows adding in the maintenance section, which is Matt Bishop and his, his 10 maintenance guys, which, and most of those buildings that you see there is just covered parking. Thanks. Maintenance section.
So I'm going to walk through some cost information. A lot of this came from the facility master plan and from some other work that we've done. And I also want to walk through some of the history of the previous cost information. So one of the first questions is that, that folks might have is, why is this cost so much higher than the 2013 costs? So first, that, that $100 million estimate was really a mid-range of, of possible construction costs, and the intention was really just to compare sites. So the, that was, that was the full purpose of that estimate. We stated what was and was not included in that estimate, did not include full recycling, recycle water delivery system. So the, another aspect of this, the South Bay Boulevard site, as we communicated this summer, anticipated it would be 10% or 15% higher than the Moore Valley sites. Three years of cost escalation, add another eight or nine percent. The highest and best water recycling opportunities really required higher-end treatment processes. And then some of the ancillary facilities and work at that time weren't known or included in the cost opinion. In some cases, for things like plant decommissioning, that's because the site location really didn't, didn't matter. The plant decommissioning would be the same. So recycle water delivery system, we didn't attempt a, an estimate at that back during the 2013 studies, other than to bring the water back to the Moore Valley through some trans, transmission pipeline. But the delivery of that water really wasn't, wasn't factored in. So the next round of, of siting studies really were the May 2016 site analysis and cost opinions. And again, that goal was, again, just comparison of sites. And we had partial water reclamation facility costs at the South Bay Boulevard site. And again, that didn't include the regional recycle water system, didn't include decommissioning of the existing site. And the 2013 siting studies had really assumed a wide range of treatment technologies, and that was carried through to 2016, because the facility master plan wasn't completed yet to a point where, where we were, you know, ready to kind of roll those out for those estimates. And the midpoint of that cost range, based on the 2014 assumptions, was around 107 million. And then that range we gave was 84 to 132 million in those studies. So some new information that came through the facility master plan and some of the other ongoing studies that, that we've, we've directed over the last, over the last several months, included the, you know, the, the South Bay Boulevard site is now preferred as for planning and permitting, and we anticipate it would have less delays. Standalone equalization storage is really needed for advanced treatment. That's a result of a lot of that flow analysis that Matt talked about. Black and Beach went through, took flow records from the city and, and looked at for these highest and best uses and for these higher-end treatment processes, the need for equalization storage. The wastewater treatment plant decommissioning costs, they're really higher than what previous estimates had been. So the old facility master plan for the original project at the existing wastewater plant site, it looked at a, a range of around $1 million for decommissioning costs. Black and Beach came up with was a really a more complete cost opinion. They looked at really restoring that site so that it could be used for something else in the future. And so those estimates came in between 3 and 5 million. The sequencing batch reactor, membrane filtration, and UV disinfection really are essential to reach, to meet the range of, of, of higher-end uses that we need to meet. Whether it's the agricultural irrigation, which would require salt removal, therefore you need to have reverse osmosis to get salt removal. Or whether it's indirect potable reuse, ground, through groundwater injection, then you have to provide reverse osmosis for that as well. So the best pretreatment for those, if you want to look at it as pretreatment as of the term, the best preparation for those is the sequencing batch reactor with membrane filtration or the membrane bioreactor. Groundwater aquifer storage is available in the Moore Valley. And so this is, this is something we're going to talk more about over the next few months through the master water reclamation plan. The, and the result of that is the possibility to offset state water deliveries through groundwater injection and extraction. And we're going to talk a little bit about what some of those, what that really means in, in a few minutes in terms of cost. So some of the, the new opportunities that came through this information really are that better water independence is, is a possibility. So being less reliant on importing water. All water demand could possibly be met through reuse groundwater. Current and future costs of state water could be reduced, possibly eliminated. The initial water wastewater costs for this facility would, would, would be, would be relatively high, but would be less subject to, less vulnerable to escalation in the future. Because you've, you've picked treatment technologies that are, you know, that are, that are modern, that are cutting-edge, state-of-the-art, without being bleeding-edge, where other, you're doing something totally new. But they're the state-of-the-art really for water reuse. And then the water reclamation facility would be well-positioned to meet all the project goals. So the highest and best uses of, of the water, we've talked about. The possibility of lower water rates by saving on water supply in the future. And then that recovers some of the cost. We'll talk about that in a few minutes for the advanced water purification. And then reclaimed water, ability to produce reclaimed water. Another goal was to consider removing, removal of contaminants of emerging concern. Well, this treatment train we're talking about is the, is, is considered the, the, the best technology for removing the majority of those contaminants of emerging concern. And then also, one benefit of this is phase one and phase two could, could, we feel now can be built in five years instead of eight.
One thing you didn't hear from Mike was the cost of the maintenance facilities, because that's not included in these cost estimates. That would be, need to be borne outside of the cost of the WRF. So those, those additional maintenance facilities that Dave talked about, those are not part of the WRF project. Just want to make that clear, because that question has come up before.
Thanks, Rob. So we're going to dive into some of the details on cost. And some of this we presented to WRF CAC, got some good input on that that we'll talk about. So really, we have three cost categories, and I've kind of used the graphic to show which are the big ones and which are the little ones. The largest cost components are construction, demolition, the hard costs. Really, total WRF cost, if we talk about what, what do you pay per month to have a water reclamation facility? The second large category is operation and maintenance, includes power, staffing, chemicals. And then the third are what we call the soft costs. Those are like planning, permitting, design, all the professional services that go along with, with pushing a project along. So, so how do we predict rate impacts? And some of the key questions for predicting rate impacts that we want to, we want to talk about. One of, one of the conversations we'd had, I think, over a year ago when we first got involved in this project, was the importance of, was the importance of being able to explain what $100 million means or $150 million means in rate impact. Because that's really what affects people, and that's kind of, that's what they understand. Big numbers really aren't meaningless unless we talk about rate impact. So first, what are the total project costs, including the hard, the soft, operation and maintenance, ongoing costs? Second is, can the WRF project possibly reduce other customer utility costs? So could we buy less imported water? Is the best example. And what could that save? What grants can we pursue? That's another thing that directly affects the bottom line. And then could project design include solar power to reduce ongoing costs? So another topic that often comes up that we talk about at, at WRF CAC and council is, is project contingency. And that's another important thing to discuss. So contingency, we don't, we don't look at that as a soft cost. So it's not something we assume is going to go into the project. However, it's a budgeting tool. And what's important is, is that you don't use it if you don't need it. So it's to account for the things you don't know you don't know yet. And those can be related to some soil condition that comes up, that the soil survey didn't catch, because it didn't drill in that precise location. It can cover weird, like odd situations in bidding climate. If you wind up bidding a project at the same time that a lot of other projects with similar skillsets are bidding nearby or in other parts of the state. So it accounts for all, all these sorts of unknowns that you can't predict when you start a multi-year project. And you typically reduce that as the project moves forward. So you may recall, we, we had a discussion about project contingencies during the cost opinions for the siting studies, being at 30%. Now that we're moving forward, we're pulling it down to 25%. And as we move forward through each design step or each planning step, that number should come down. And, and that contingency is something that nobody views as, it's not a slush fund. It's not something we view as, as something we can expand into or that the project can expand into. It's, it's to protect us from the things we don't see coming yet. But it should be tracked just as any other, as, as any other cost element or any other budget element is tracked. So the WRF project components, we've talked a lot about- So, the WRF project components, we've talked a lot about phases and onsite and offsite, but I want to run through these briefly, because it's important for the next slides. The Phase One Water Reclamation Facility include the lift station, a water reclamation facility that'll deliver tertiary disinfect water, the pipeline to the ocean outfall. The Phase Two Onsite Facilities are those facilities that would be constructed onsite to give us recycled water on the WRF site. So, it include advanced treatment, recycled water storage, and then the recycled water pump station. The Phase Two Offsites are really your recycled water distribution system options. And the range we're looking at are really groundwater injection, agricultural exchange, urban irrigation, possibly some combination of the three. So, the Phase One Water Reclamation Facility Capital Cost Opinion. From Black and Beach, they have, you know, a 97 million Phase One Water Reclamation Facility, construction cost subtotal without contingency. That's just part of the story. And their charge was to give us, you know, come back with construction costs, and then we were, we work with them to apply these other costs that are also important for the project budget. So, procurement of 4%, that's for preliminary design and getting requests for proposals out, and all the activities required for that concept design and preliminary design. Project administration and construction management, just what they sound like. That's the quality control and the review process, all the way through construction, field staff during construction. Permitting, monitoring, and mitigation, that's an allowance for permitting, permitting conditions that may come up.
Mike, I just want you to remember this slide to go back to when you're done.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thanks.
Demolition of the existing wastewater plant. So, that's, you know, a percentage of that is, would be borne by the city, remainder by Cayuga Sanitary District, since they're part owner. The property acquisition, assuming around 300,000 for South Bay Boulevard. And then, the capital cost subtotal with all those turns into about 114 million. That construction contingency from Black and Beach, that's 25% of the construction subtotal. And that gets us to the 136 million for the Phase One Capital Cost Opinion. So, the other costs that we need to look at, to look at, complete rate impact, or what the total impact, rate impact might look like at this stage. Knowing that that's going to be revisited in more detail after master reclamation plan is done, after the rate study's reevaluated. Phase One Water Reclamation Facility, the Phase Two Recycled Water Facilities, we anticipate, based on the preliminary layouts we've done, a range of somewhere to 11, between 11 and 26 million, based on the options that we're evaluating. So, that gives us a total capital cost of 126 to 140. With contingency applied, total WRF capital cost could range from 150 to 168. And I know we've, I know it's late, and I know, but I think it's important to walk through these numbers, so we can come back and we can dive into more detail on some of these. But it's important to understand where these numbers are coming from. Project operation and maintenance costs, we've estimated between Phase One and Phase Two, a range of 1.8 to 2.4 million. Again, that depends on what we do with the water, which treatment option we go with, and other decisions. So, the offset, so that we want to talk about are water supply costs. And so, indirect potable reuse, groundwater injection for us, could offset state water costs. So, as you see, the city's water supply costs range from state water at the highest, $2,000 per acre foot as of this year. Could be 10 to 20% higher in the future, based on some of the projects that the state's planning to implement on the project. Groundwater costs in the neighborhood of $1,000 per acre foot. That's limited to a 580 acre foot a year allocation. That's what the city has a right to pump. And then, seawater desalination costs are 1,600 per acre foot. And again, that plant can only be operated in the event of emergency. So, the annual costs of state water, the city's budget anticipates two and a half, roughly 2.4 million. And then, that could go up another 10% in the future, based on discussions among state water project contractors and some speculation. So, what strategies could we use to reduce costs, and how much could that affect it? So, if we look at different financing terms, so 2% financing instead of 2.5%, savings, if we don't have state water project costs, whether we can completely eliminate that or not, that'll be explored. But if we can minimize that, could be a saving of up to 100 million and a half a year. Grant funding, we're assuming, you know, our goal is to get 10% grant funding. The numbers you're about to see, we'll assume 10%. And then, solar power purchase agreement, meaning we enter a contract with a solar power contractor, they come and build panels, and they sell us power at 2/3 of what we'd normally pay. Then that could save us 1/3 of power cost. So, one thing that's important, and one thing that came up in WRF CAC that I think was a really good, a really good comment and discussions we got from the public, were what we originally did is we combined the water and sewer rates. And I think that might have confused folks in a way. But it's real important to look, view those separately. Water and sewer are separate funds. Water rates were raised to correct existing funding shortfalls back last year. And at the time, the water rates didn't involve, nothing about the water reclamation facility project was involved in the water rates. Now, the sewer rates were raised at the same time to account for a reclamation-ready Phase One project, and assumed Cayuga's would participate. And the origin of that were those siting studies we did in 2013. We knew at the time that wasn't the complete picture. Since we're now considering a full reclamation project alone, and we have more cost information, then the sewer rates would need to be increased to account for the difference. So, rate study update is going to be needed to determine that potential increase. And so, we would anticipate that study would occur once both the facility master plan and master reclamation plan are complete. So, it'd be done this summer. Grants, grants could offset part of that possible increase. But one of the challenges with the rate studies, you can't assume you're going to get grants when you go, because you know you're going to finance the majority of the project, or significant part of the project. So, that helps reduce the real rates, even though you go get, you know, get authorization through the 2018 process, or set yourself up for certain rates. So, reduced dependence on current water supplies could also reduce that net rate increase when sewer and water are considered together. So, the ability to recombine or reallocate what water is coming from which sources could help offset some of that rate increase. So, that's why we had coupled the two together, but we've separated them in this presentation. So, currently, there's no water supply benefit for wastewater disposal for Morro Bay right now. It all just goes out to the ocean. In the future, highly treated wastewater will become part of the water supply in some form or fashion. And the cost for imported water is higher than other city water supplies, like groundwater and seawater. But the groundwater supply is limited, seawater is expensive, and can really be only used during emergencies. And therefore, the new water reclamation facility could help reduce water rates by improving supply groundwater. So, the next slide we put together is what would be the impact on utility rates? So, what we did is we've added some information in here. We've looked at the, you know, the average sewer rate for single-family residential, and also the water rate for five units a month for this analysis. And so, looking at the historic, so FY 1415, you know, around $27. Currently, goes up to 52. Approved 1920 to 67. And then, with total WRF project, we said TBD. It could be less if we can reduce our state water dependence. So, it could be as low as 50, or it could stay about where it is. The estimated average monthly sewer rate of $45 went up to 62 as a result of the last rate increase. Then, approved to go up to 83. And we're saying with the total water reclamation facility project, could range from 127 to 157. And so, that gives the estimated, when we do the math, the estimated combined average monthly rate, you know, we see a rate increase that could vary from 27 on the low end to 74 on the high end. For financing purposes, you would need to plan to bring in the 74, and let the grants and the other strategies try to reduce that down. So, in summary, the initial sewer rate increase of $37.41, and that's based on 2019 from 2014, that comparison. So, that $37 increase was going to pay for the Phase One Water Reclamation Facility with Cayuga Sanitary District as a partner, and represented a 56 million investment by Morro Bay. We talked about how debt service was applied. If we reallocated some other capital projects and would have used that debt service, then we might be able to get to 70 million by moving projects around for financing. But the proposed rate increase would get us up to 111. So, that's where that additional $74, that additional $74 from 2014, gets us to a full water recycling facility, not phased. And then, could be over a 50% savings in water cost. I say could be, because we still need to get through the master reclamation plan and confirm the hydrogeology. So, another discussion I wanted to touch on too, and Mr. Woodson brought up this discussion earlier on different, different design and construction methods. We want to touch on that now that facility master plan is done. So, really, the current schedules we've developed are based on design build for the water reclamation facility, and then, design bid builds for, build for pipelines and lift stations, and the lift station. Largely because the design, the WRF design and construction is the critical path. It's going to take longer. The design and construction on pipelines and lift stations just won't take as long. Draft facility master plan's completed, and there are no new findings that would conflict with the recommendations we'd had in our October 2015 workshop. And our recommendation there was go with design build for the water reclamation facility. There are legal restrictions with construction management at risk. I think a lot of the goals that Mr. Woodson has in mind, we can beat that with design build. So, you know, the accountability and risk allocation to that contractor team, that can all be done through that, through that approach, as the attorney mentioned earlier. So, we can, we can get there with construction management at risk. But since you're a general law city, you can't, you can't do construction management at risk. And I don't know that you would, I would not see that as having an advantage for you over design build for this project. Anyway, even if it was, even if it was available. So, the delivery alternatives workshop that we did back last October, we talked about conventional design bid build, construction management at risk, and then, different methods of design build. And the recommendations still are, since scheduling costs are critical, lift station and pipelines can go conventional design bid build. That way, you control the design, negotiation with Caltrans, the detailed utility design, that's all done by a designer. That goes to bid, and you get the lowest qualified bidder for a contractor, so you have good cost certainty, good cost control. And it's the kind of work that a lot of local contractors can do, that kind of pipeline work. So, the water reclamation facility, we recommend design build. Just because if you want to be done with that now, and we're saying four and a half years, then that's, that will get you there. And it will also give you opportunities for your, you know, when we produce, now the facility master plan is released, as we go through the procurement process for a design builder, they'll review that, and they'll find ways they can save costs this way or that. And part of that process is them providing those proposals, and us reviewing those with them, and then finding creative, us not creating such a restrictive plan that they can't bring that innovation and bring that ability to get creative and reduce cost.
Excuse me, Mike. Just looking at the time, just wondering, you know, how much time for this presentation? Just want to be conscious of some public comment and then discussion from council. You know, just trying to keep an eye on time.
Okay. So, what I'm going to do is I am done with the, with the cost and project delivery. What I'll do is kick it over to John to run through some of the comments.
I'll wrap it up really quickly. I just want to add one more thing.
I was just trying to get an estimate on where we're going to be at.
One more thing about costs. So, when we finish the master water reclamation plan, we'll have a more refined cost, so the range won't be as wide as the 111 to 160 million. That'll be a more refined range. So, before we move forward to a rate study, we won't be looking at that, that wide range at that point in time.
Right. And your points well taken, Mr. Mayor. Five or 10 minutes is my best guess right here.
Thank you.
Just want to highlight some things we've heard at WRF CAC. Since the community workshop a month ago, we've received six letters or emails with substantive comments, a couple others that were just, "Thanks," and "Keep on working." We have, we're going to be meeting with the school district and the farm bureau in the next week or so to talk about certain concerns. They, we don't know what they are specifically, but we want to do that. We had two speakers at WRF CAC who also were among the letter writers as well. Some of the key issues that were brought up included the methodology in the facility master plan, and explained the rationale for Phase One and Two. I think we've gone through that a bit here today. That the lift station might need more evaluation in terms of location because of sensitivity in the floodplain. That's something that we do intend to address and is going to have to be addressed through the EIR. It's also going to be built into the design of the lift station itself to safeguard that. What do you do with the storage for excessive storm flow? Will we need to analyze more there? That's something, obviously, that we will be considering. Several sequoia issues were brought up. One, can you consider economic impacts? There were a whole variety of questions related to that. And there, get into detail if you have specific questions about that. About the consistency of the project with the county's local coastal plan. Again, the issue here is that it'll be annexed to the city. And that being the case, then the county's LCP doesn't apply. It would be the city's LCP. So, it's a really timely issue with the general plan LCP update to make it all consistent there. Others mentioned greenhouse gas emissions and relocating facilities to the edge of town, and the degree to which that might be an impact. All issues that could be considered in the, and will be considered in the EIR. A variety of financial issues were brought up, bumping costs, interest rates, and so forth, things we were talking about today. Reclamation, where would the water be injected? More evaluations needed, and we are in the middle of that, and Mike's got more detail about that if you want to know. And also, the other facilities, we won't say courtyard, city facilities. This was interesting. There's some concerns about that in relocating to that location, and a lot of support is what we're hearing too. We're hearing a lot of things is what we're hearing. So, we don't have any real consensus there about that being a bad or a good thing. It's a thing to consider. And then, of course, the public input at WRF CAC, similar feedback to what we got through the letters. At WRF CAC, we heard a lot of things about minimizing costs, the contingency being too high, unclear how project costs were derived, and so forth, peer review and effects of sewer and water rates. We tried to address that tonight. Questions raised about the involvement of city finance staff, software, and budget reporting. Those are ancillary issues we'd certainly be happy to address with you. A lot of issues related to facility layout and amenities. A lot on the, a lot of folks at WRF CAC thought, "Let's focus on city facilities. The intent is to minimize costs, because they seem to be higher." And at the same time, there is a, there is a desire, "But let's look at the other facilities in the EIR." I think that is appropriate to do, no matter how you decide to go forward. Is it possible to, even possible to have a lift station between Highway One and the coast because of its proximity to the coast? That's something we've discussed a bit with Coastal Commission, and they're supportive conceptually of what we're trying to do here. Then, there's a lot of discussion about the pipeline location. Better in the city street, better overland. Some felt, "Well, it's going to be cheaper overland, because you don't have to disrupt the streets." Black and Beach went through a pretty exhaustive process to show otherwise. But that was the kind of discussion we had there. A variety of environmental and design issues. How would sewage be prevented from leaving the facility in a storm? Groundwater contamination, the width of the access road, does it need to be as wide as shown? There were different opinions about that. Concern about the amount of cut and fill that might be needed on the site. And if you, if you just focused on... And if you, if you just focused on the, the WRF itself, would that reduce the footprint in some way and reduce cut and fill? Those are, those are issues to consider. And also the, the need to address biological and cultural resources, impacts from pipelines, the lift station and so forth. Elevations to show what that would look like were asked for. And if solar was, was included to address potential battery storage options to make it a more even energy use, lighting issues. So a lot of environmental issues, many of which will be addressed and actually provides us great scoping information for the environmental impact report. And so, and then of course, some editorial comments about the readability of the document, all of which is good and we can certainly refine that as we update that at the end of the environmental impact report process. So that leads us to our next steps. Here we are tonight and this is sort of a, we, we want any input from you. The reclamation, master reclamation, water reclamation plan, we hope to have in March. We're really working on the technical work of that right now. An RFP out for the design bid build aspect of the WRF offsite improvements, just coming up right away. And then getting a request for qualifications for the design build aspects of the project in the summertime and an RFP out to, which goes out to those who are pre-qualified, the shortlist there, later in the year. And that coincides roughly with when the EIR is finalized so that they can, someone can be selected and start building and, and, and working on that certainly into the future from there. So the next year is all about studying. It's all about the EIR and it's all about getting the ducks in order to, to make this come together. And at this point, we really want to open it up to you and we're here to take notes. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And if you can find that one slide at some point, we'll, there might be other slides people need, but I'm just getting, you get started there and then we'll start off questions. We've got one speaker slip and anybody else for public comment? Mr. Woodson, we'll get into questions and I'll call public comment in a minute. So I'll start with public comment. And Matt, would you want to start us off on questions for this item?
Sure. First, one question, I was just thinking and looking at the design and whatnot. The, the lift station, I know there's a lift station on the bottom of Quintana and South Bay. Is that the lift station we're talking about or were the different lift stations that go over to 41 and that corridor bringing it back over from North Marah Bay? So when we say lift station, singular or plural or how many are we talking about?
So what we're proposing for this project is one lift station located in the vicinity of Atascadero Road near the existing plant site. That the collection system that now ends at the wastewater plant, where those pipes coming from multiple directions will be redirected to this new lift station and then that sewage will be pumped over to South Bay Boulevard from that site. One thing we did that you'll see discussed in the facility master plans, we looked at that lift station at Quintana and South Bay Boulevard. We looked at trying to route that a different direction to see if it would be cost effective and it didn't pencil out. So we looked at trying to bring that directly up to the site or tying it into that common pipeline, but it, it just, it just didn't pencil out because it's such a small flow.
Well, I guess likewise, the, the next question that brings to mind, the lift station is with the treated reclaimed water pumping it back to the Marah Valley, will we just be enlarging those facilities at that Quintana, South Bay site to re, to make it bigger to pump the water back to the Marah Valley?
What we'll wind up doing is we'll have a recycled water pump station at the South, at the site, on the plant site, adjacent to the rest of the treatment facilities. That'll be the only pumping facility that we need and then it'll be a pipeline that's dedicated that just carries recycled water over to, over to the reuse location.
Okay. And then next question. You mentioned WRF offsite improvements. Could you give me examples of that?
Sure. So the WRF offsite improvements are the lift station and the pipelines.
Including both ends, the inflow and then the reclaimed water.
That's correct. So on the, on the reclaimed water side, the, the RFP that we would release in January for, to start the design process, or to get a designer on board, that'd be design of the lift station, the brine pipeline going back up to the outfall and then the force main going up to the site. So those three pipelines would be, those, those pipelines of the lift station would be part of that design contract. The recycled water, we would, we would likely release that pipeline or, because it could be a pipeline with injection wells or multiple pipelines, that could go out through a separate design process. That first designer could go after that. But we'd want to wait and do that after we get through the master reclamation plan. But our objective would be to keep the project moving along as quickly as possible, is to get that request for proposal out for that, for that designer, for that force main and lift station.
And then I guess my last question before, thinking about more, in terms of the reclaimed water, we're also going to be using the outfall in years then when we have too much water to either A, inject it or use it for whatever use, but we are going to still be releasing that water, correct?
There, there are times you would need to, or you, and part of what we want to do with the master reclamation plan is look at, is, is the reuse going to be seasonal? Can it be, ideally, can it be all year? And one of the advantages with groundwater recharge is you, it's, it's, it's less seasonal than irrigation. So all depends on what we do. Brine that we generate so that when we, we treat with reverse osmosis, we generate a brine stream. And so that brine would be discharged at that outfall, similar to many other brine streams around the state, very low volume. And, you know, and the salinity is really close to ocean salinity. So it's, it, that's, that's the, kind of the most cost-effective method to get rid of that brine.
I'm sorry to belabor this, but just in case we do, Cayuga's builds their plant no, further north, Toro Creek, and if they do do some sort of treated water, they're also going to have a brine. Do we run into any sort of dangers or anything on the horizon that you've seen in terms of too much brine being released at that ocean outfall?
For the quantities we're talking about, your brine usually winds up at about, say, 10% of your, the total water that you're treating. So considering that we've sent all the full flows from both communities out through that outfall, shouldn't be an issue to send brine. And part of what we do during the environmental impact report is analyze potential impacts to aquatic life from that sort of discharge. But from the facility's perspective, it's pretty easy to manage because it's low flows.
Thank you. Great, Matt. Red?
You used the phrase early on, water independence. And what are the components of that? Are we going to reclaim every drop of water that we waste? So is there 100% recovery?
Yeah. So we're working through that with this master reclamation plan. The goal is to try to recover as much of that water as you can, as is cost-effective to recover. Water, when we use the term water independence, what we really mean is that you're less reliant on imported water. And, and we view, if you generate your own recycled water, can put that in the ground, pump it out and use it, then you've become kind of a contained loop or you really control a lot of your own water supply at that point. So that is, ranks you higher on the water independence scale than if you're importing the majority of your water.
Okay. I'm sorry, Rob.
Based on our, sorry, that was, based on our initial water supply diversification discussion with the council, I think was in summer, early spring, and based on recent numbers, the effluent, the treated water coming out of this plant will be at least 750 acre feet a year. We can recover 600 acre feet a year of that. So 750 is going to come out and likely go into the ground. When we pull it out of the ground and have to RO it to get, reverse osmosis it to get nitrates out, we'll likely end up with 600 acre feet of water because of the water reclamation facility that we didn't have before. And we can pump 500 acre feet, 561 I believe, acre feet of water. We already have a right to pump that from our Marah Valley wells. So putting those two things together right there is right at or just over our current water requirement. So, and, and thus we could be at water independence because we could supplement the last little bit if we needed to with, with desalination, the salinization of seawater.
Okay. That's what I wanted to hear because to me, independent means no outside water. And if we're going to use that word to the residents of Marah Bay, we, we need to mean it. The pump station that we're going to build, the lift station, is that going to be underground? Is it visible? Is there a, a profile?
I'm going to let Matt Thomas come up and talk about it and see if he put the concept design together.
Yeah. The answer is yes. Part of it is below ground because the waste, the sewer comes in below ground. So there will be a, a structure below ground to capture the wastewater. But because it's in a floodplain, our current concept is that the, the, I guess I'll call it the roof of that, call it the wet well, the roof of the wet well will be above the floodplain. And then a building, a structure will be on top of that which would house the, the controls and the electrical equipment to protect it from flooding. So the, the pumps yet to be selected, but probably would be below grade. And then the electrical equipment and motors and those types of parts of the system would be above grade in a building. And it didn't make it into this draft of the FMP, but Fraser Seiple is developing a visual, visualization of the above grade structure.
So about how many square feet of area will that occupy?
Very good question. I think of it, I'm going to give you the linear dimensions. I think it'd probably be somewhere around 100 to 120 feet square, something like that. And that includes the site access and some parking. So it's, it's a modest size.
About a quarter acre?
I'd have to do the math. Yeah, that's probably about right.
And when we pay for state water, do we pay for the actual water or are we paying for something to deliver the water?
Our state water is made up of several components. It's made up of the entire state water system, the local facilities and the treatment and distribution of the water over to us. Most of that cost is paying the debt on the big statewide facilities and the local facilities. We pay based on what our allocation we decided on was in the 1990s. So we pay based on 1313 acre feet a year plus our 2260 acre foot a year drought buffer. So we pay two and a half million dollars a year, somewhere around there. The variable amount is how mu, we only pay for the treatment of the water that we use. We pay for the rest of the component on the total amount of water. So if we didn't take a drop of water under our current state water contract, we'd be paying most of that, two mil, two and a half million dollars to County Flood Control District who passes that on to the state.
So if we become water independent and don't take state water, we're still going to pay for state water for some period of time? I assume we have a contract that will expire?
We have, we have a contract that does not expire, but there are negotiation points built into it. So we can't renegotiate the amount of water that we take or the amount that we pay until after the local facility bond is paid off, which is, I think we have six-ish, seven years left before that happens. But what we could do is there are other state water contractors in the flood control district that could use water at certain points in time and we can sell water amongst ourselves. We just can't sell it outside of the flood control district per the contract. Now, when the local facilities bond is paid off, we can renegotiate that contract.
Can we renegotiate it that we don't pay anything anymore?
We could renegotiate it so we don't want any state water at all. I believe we could do that.
But does that mean we stop paying?
Yes, we would stop paying for it, but we wouldn't have any right to get it in an emergency. What might make better sense is to maybe negotiate that somebody else buys it from us on a long-term or a medium-term contract so that we could reevaluate that every few years. So we might sell our water right to City of Santa Barbara, who's also a state water contractor on this system, or Beelton or Ro Grande or a multitude of agencies that have a need for more water.
And is that the approach that you have been thinking of taking? What I'm trying to get at is that we say we want to get off of state water and we're telling our residents that we're going to become water independent and not have to take state water anymore, but I want to be sure that that means that we're also not going to be paying for state water.
Right. We wouldn't, it doesn't make sense to get off of state water and we could get off of state water today if we wanted to, but we'd still be paying for it.
Right. That's what I'm trying to avoid.
A lot of these questions will be answered through this next year with not just the master water reclamation plan, but we have a one water master planning effort that's going to be going on this year.
But your, your question can be answered right now though. So when our state water, when, when we pay off our local portion in about six and a half, seven years, at that point, we can get out of paying for state water. We can either get out of paying for state water, assuming that we're water independent, we build the WRF.
Yeah.
We can either get out of it by saying, we never want to be a state water customer again, or we can get out of it by negotiating with somebody else to buy our portion, which might be wiser in the long term so that we don't lose access to that. But bottom line is if we complete this thing in five years, about a year and get the system rolling, we'll be able to test it for a year, year and a half, and then we'll be able to make a great decision, knowing that our water reclamation system is working to be, to, to negotiate to not have any state water costs, not have that two and a half million dollars of costs. And, and as Mike briefed earlier, we, we think our water independence costs will be roughly half of our state water costs.
All right. And the, the one water, are we getting ready to put out an RFP to study the one water?
Joe's office just gave me the final draft of that, so I anticipated going out this week.
The rate study will be completed in the summer of this year. That's when we know how much we need to increase the rates and that's when we can go for a 218 vote?
Yes, sir.
After the summer?
After. Let me, let me, so we've had several discussions on this. We are thinking through right now and will likely want some council input on when we actually do that. But we, we had discussions earlier this week on how quickly could we get that rate study complete? Because one of the discussions we've had is getting through that Prop 218 process as soon as possible is probably a good thing. We want to make sure we do good outreach, great outreach, communicate to the community. But, but the earlier we can go out and do that, our current staff recommendation is, is the earlier the better. So maybe spring instead of summer.
Okay. And that's good for you, spring?
Yeah. And I was going to correct myself. What we talked about was being through, through the hearing and everything by summer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the, the maintenance facility formerly known as the corp yard, that's going to be part of the EIR study? Is that the, the location of it? Because what I'm looking for is the highest and best use of our coastal plain property. And I'm not sure that it, the highest and best use would be for a maintenance facility.
Yes. We'll be looking at that facility potentially moving to this site as part of the EIR analysis. That's correct. We'll also be looking at alternatives, one of which might be, what if it doesn't? That, that would be a legitimate alternative. Right. Okay. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Red. John?
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate that presentation. Third time I've seen it. It's okay. It's okay, I learn something new every time. And of course, Mike and John, thank you, and Rob as well. Appreciate your information. Just a couple of questions. And Matt, this may involve some input from you. I want to understand, as best I can, given the research that I've done, the people that I have talked to, and then your expertise and knowledge, I want to understand the issues associated with a decision made here, or a recommendation considered here, not to move towards a direct potable reuse. And in your report, I didn't mark the page, but there were discussions with the city manager, et cetera, and other staff, and you guys. And the decision was given, possibly the unknowns now with regard to where the state regs are going, and possibly the cost differential associated with that. The decision might be made not to do that, or should be made not to do that, or that's what's in, you know, the master plan. The assumption is in the master plan. So I guess the question is, is what do you really think may well happen in terms of the possibility of the state coming down with regs very quickly? Because I'm hearing a little bit of a different story from some of the state people, and also the readings that I read cited by you about other states where DPR is being active, other countries as well, that it's a reality. And I, being a scientist, I get the science with regard to the removal of pathogens, et cetera, so I understand that. I don't understand the costs associated with it. But could you elaborate for us as a council, your thoughts about the highest and best use is direct potable reuse, in my mind? Because we have a state water line that is 500 feet from our facility. And so that could produce a tremendous amount of dollar return for the commodity. So what's the issue with DPR? What, give me a, give me the, help me understand it.
Okay, well, let's start with what the FMP set out to do. So the FMP has a working assumption underlying it, which is that there are currently no regulations in place in California to allow for direct potable reuse. So one of the chapters of the report is an evaluation of what facilities, what infrastructure would the city need to implement direct potable reuse in the future? And it's a bit speculative because those regulations aren't here yet. The state is supposed to propagate, well, actually, it's December, right? So they're supposed to be propagating the guidelines upon which they would then develop those regulations going forward in the next, you know, coming years. And there definitely is a trend toward making it feasible. So the FMP doesn't say, "Don't do it or do it." It just provides a chapter that says, "If you, if the regulations come out in the way that we speculate that they will, then these are the facilities that you would have to have, and the cost of those facilities to accomplish that."
So a question. If you did go to DPR and had infrastructure costs associated with that, that are sunk costs to build this thing, but subtracted from that the infrastructure costs to do IPR, or groundwater injection using, you know, Mother Earth as our buffer, what's the net-net of all of that? In other words, there'd be some cost savings and not, there's some offsets of not doing all the infrastructure for IPR?
So the main assumption in IPR right now is that you're going to be able to do groundwater injection and extraction, and then put that recycled water into your water supply. In DPR, you would have to build, you may have to build another water treatment plant. So the way this, the regulations are coming out is you would have to have an advanced water treatment plant, which is what the FMP is proposing, and then another water treatment plant, like a conventional water treatment plant. So let me give you an example. The city of San Diego currently is implementing what they call their pure water program. They have their main wastewater treatment plant in, just on the coastline. They're going to put a pipeline from there to an advanced water treatment plant that they're building in the north city area, and then send that water to the forbay of another existing water treatment plant. So you can see there, there's a set, let me back up and explain that a little bit differently. They have an existing wastewater plant, they're building an advanced water treatment plant, just like you would in your scenario, and a set of pipelines to take it to the forbay of an existing water treatment plant. To do all of that here in the city would require you to build the wharf to its full extent, as it's been defined in the FMP, all the way through the advanced treatment step, and then build another water treatment plant. So it appears to be an expensive proposition while you have the ability, you appear to have the ability, and this is to be confirmed in the master water reclamation plan, you have the ability to do IPR without building additional water treatment infrastructure. Is that right, Mike?
So, yeah, part of what we're fleshing out through the hydrogeology studies is, how much water can we put in the ground with the, kind of the minimal amount of injection wells and infrastructure? One of the benefits, a couple of benefits you get with IPR over DPR are you've got a physical barrier between where you discharge and where you extract out, and you also get the opportunity for dilution and storage. Your water plant has an RO system, your wastewater plant has an RO system. Your water plant reverse osmosis system was designed for steady flows. That plant wants to run at 500 gallons a minute, and run for eight hours and then turn off. Your wastewater plant generates flow whenever it generates flow. We buffer a little bit of that, but that flow is going to come down to your water plant whenever it comes down. So the, basically, if we can use the aquifer as the storage tank, and if we can find a way to have a minimal number of injection wells, you know, if it's not a field of five injection wells, if it's a couple of injection wells relatively close together, pipelines aren't that expensive to get over to that location, if we can make that work, then that, to me, becomes preferred over DPR. Because your monitoring requirement, what's anticipated is with DPR, you're going to have much more stringent monitoring requirements. And that gets really expensive for lab work, staff time, et cetera. The redundancies you're going to need to have in place are going to be different than they are for wastewater. I mean, one of your advantages right now would be, let's say if you had a major catastrophic problem at the reverse osmosis facility, aren't that many that would actually cause the whole thing to break down? But let's say that broke down, you could send that water to the outfall. With DPR, you could, you could, you could find yourself in a situation where you've kind of designed your whole water supply to take this wastewater and treat it, and then you don't have that supply anymore. Whereas you could be, with the IPR, you're always injecting. You're just always injecting and always able to extract it out. So I don't know if that helps.
Yeah, but I still wanted the question answered. Are you telling me for DPR that there is no offset in not having, I mean, we're going to still have to have all of the IPR infrastructure components, and then an additional, the additional infrastructure components associated with whatever it requires by the state, is required by the state to do DPR?
That was explained much more eloquently than I did. That is correct.
Okay, thank you. In a sentence, yes. And so with that, the cost, and I don't remember on the slide seeing that, and I don't remember from the report, I apologize, what is the magnitude of cost we're talking about? And I know we don't have the regs, but do you have a sense? Are we talking 10 million, 30 million, 20 million? And I wouldn't hold you to that, but I just, you know, I'm just trying to get a sense of the magnitude of that.
I'm gonna have to get back to you on that number, but it's in the tens of millions of dollars.
Okay.
To give you the specific number, I just don't have it off the top of my head.
Sure. That would be helpful to know that. Okay. The question about state water costs, 2223 is the expiration date on the Feather River debt service issue. Is it not true that we really have no idea what contracted rates will be at that time? And from what I've seen, there is data to indicate that rates could be significantly lower?
They'll either be lower or higher. There's a $49 billion Governor Brown project that he wants to build with the tunnel project to get more water down from the north to the south. That's estimated at about, at the state water contractors meeting, they are throwing out numbers about $400 an acre foot, $250 to $400 more an acre foot for that project. The state water project was built with the first Governor Brown, so it needs to be maintained, and there are plenty of capital. I've never seen a, with the retirement of a debt, costs go down in my career. We engineers seem to find other projects to fill the void.
Yep. And good, you guys do, I know. Most people say that the Delta Pipeline is Pipe Dream, but, you know, that's just a pun. So does that require some amount of federal funding for that to happen, for the state to realistically make that happen?
Probably.
Okay. And so would it be an invalid assumption to assume that, given the change in federal status, that that would be less likely?
I don't know. I heard a report that Governor Brown was looking forward to the relaxing of the environmental regulations, because that made his project more viable.
Okay. So it's still a big unknown, I guess?
Yes, it is a very big unknown.
And so I just, that helps me a lot. I'm trying to just get a quick handle, this'll be my last set of questions, question.
Trying to keep.
The commodity has a value. I mean, the way I look at this, commodity has a value. And that's an offset to the cost to our rate payers. And so the commodity is water. And the reuse potential, which is going to be defined in the master water reclamation plan, and the one-water plan I get, is coming out, and we'll get some information on that. But I have to think about and ask you about the true value and the opportunity for the resale of that commodity for such things as ag use, golf course irrigation, parks irrigation, things like that. To me, is not the value of that water much less than what it will cost to produce it? The value that we can get?
It's very much less than what it costs to produce.
Right.
Because the value is based on what a potential purchaser could pay for another water supply. So if they're pumping it out of the ground for $200 an acre foot with their local well, they're not going to pay $2,000 an acre foot for reclaimed water. I think I've said this 50 or 60 times, I've never seen a reclaimed water project that actually made money through distribution of agricultural irrigation. In Orange County, Florida, they gave the reclaimed water away.
So I guess my real question is, is there really an assumption that the commodity value of us achieving water independence, the value of the resale of the commodity will not significantly offset the cost to the rate payer?
I think it has more value to ourselves than an outside customer, because we potentially, there are a lot of unknowns with this, with the state water costs, offsetting that state water costs.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Maros. I'm trying to keep my eye on time, and we all have in-depth questions.
Well, I submitted some questions in advance, so I'm not going to repeat those. I'm just going to ask ones that have come up to my mind, listening to the presentation, which, by the way, I'd love to get a copy of, if you could send it to me. I do still have the issue of when in this process will we decide which of the treatment options we're going with, of the two that are presented in the report?
Sure. So the goal with the design-build procurement process is to keep that option, keep that open, and then we allow the proposers to put proposals together, and they pick one or a modification of one that meets the criteria we lay out, and then we evaluate it based on lifecycle costs, capital costs, other criteria that are important. So the goal is leave that to the design builders. One of the advantages we have is what we call a greenfield site, meaning we've got a piece of property that has nothing built on it right now. And they may come up with creative ways based on other projects they've done, where they want to put these pieces and parts together a little differently than we have. We want to keep this as open as possible because we're fine with either of those treatment approaches. We needed to develop treatment approaches or alternatives for budgeting purposes, and also kind of set the envelope. But that would be part of that selection process for that design builder, is they'll come with a design.
Okay. Well, that's very helpful. So you don't, at this point, have a preference for one or the other?
Really don't.
I mean, they're both established, they're both legitimate, they both would achieve the same quality of water.
Yes, ma'am. And the thing I would add to that is, based on the level of cost estimating, Matt mentioned it's about a 5% design, not that different between the two capital costs, considering where we're at in the process.
Okay. And I noticed there was no mention of the Choro Valley in the report. Is there a reason for that? Is that just off the table, it's not, I mean, I don't know the background.
Sure. For reuse, you mean for reuse alternatives?
Yes, right.
It's still on the table, and we're still looking at that. We'll talk a little bit about some of the water rights. One of the advantages to the Lower Morro Valley is when you get downstream of the Narrows, the only wells there really are city wells. And so any water you put in, the city draws out. You don't compete with anybody. Choro Valley is kind of a longer aquifer, and you have a number of different straws along the way, and a number of folks who can take that water out. We are looking at Choro Valley, we haven't taken it off the table, but the opportunity you have in Morro Valley is unique because you can, you are the only user in that part of the groundwater basin, and you've got a barrier between you and the other ag users upstream.
So there's no contamination in that well, in those wells?
Well, there's nitrate. There's, there is, there is nitrate, you know, over the maximum contaminant level in those wells. But you remove that nitrate through the reverse osmosis system that the city has. That water treatment plant is designed for that.
Okay. And we were talking earlier about the one-water plan, and I think a lot of people associate with that toilet-to-tap, so we are not talking about that, really, when we're talking about indirect potable use. Or would you also?
Well, I mean, to me, direct potable reuse is illegal, and so.
No, no, I know, at the present time. But we just had a discussion about that, and I did have a set of questions, very similar to John's, about that whole issue of when we might do it, what the additional costs would be associated with it, what was, I saw the very same questions. But so it's still, we can still call it a one-water plan with indirect potable use. Is that correct?
I think what Rob's talking about, I'll let Rob kind of describe the one-water plan.
So the one-water plan is thinking about water in an integrated way, not mixing stormwater, wastewater, and potable water together in one big pot. But it's thinking about your treatment process, it's looking at, is there a way
But it's thinking about your treatment process, it's looking at, is there a way not to get stormwater to the bay as quickly as possible and make sure that that gets into the ground so it continues to be a water supply for the city of Moro Bay? Is there a way to manage our water conservation program in such a way that we're not affecting the sewer system? So rather than doing these plans in separate silos and not really having them integrate, it's a plan that looks at everything holistically.
I think you answered my question. I think that's all my questions. Thank you.
I'm just going to open up public comment. Most of my comment questions were answered and I think some of my questions I can submit as well, but I want to open for public comment. First one is John Mayno. Thanks for waiting, John. Bill, are you going to speak as well? Yeah, I know you already did during public comment.
Good evening, Council. My name is, boy, I'm having a tough time with my voice.
Thanks, John.
My name's John Mayno. I own the property adjacent to the proposed South Bay Boulevard site. The long driveway to the project runs parallel to my fence line. Some of the buildings is now designed or as close as 100 feet from my property. The water reclamation facility at this location will devalue my property and cause conflicts to my agricultural operation that I have not had to deal with previously. The water reclamation facility will be bad enough, adding the city's public works offices and facilities would be considerably more impactful. The property that the city has selected to purchase for this project is and has always been zoned agriculture. The site itself is good quality grazing land. I know this because I have leased it for that purpose for many years. Public works offices, corporation yards, bus storage, and many of the other uses proposed for this site are currently not allowed on agriculturally zoned land in either the county or the city. The city apparently is intending after annexation to convert the zoning to allow for non-agricultural use. The conversion of agricultural land is addressed, excuse me, in the city's own land use and open space element. There are six criteria in policy LU44, all of which have to be met in order to convert land to uses other than agriculture. I believe that the city will not be able to meet at least four of these criteria. The draft facilities master plan correctly refers to this site as a remote location. To move public works offices and facilities outside of town from where they have always been located is unnecessary. Such a move will also be contrary to the city's own local coastal plan. The public utilities, public facilities section in the city's land use and open space element policy LU77 states clearly, and I quote, "The concept of centralization should be utilized in the future development of public buildings and facilities." My family has put our property, the closest neighbor to these facilities and activities, in a conservation easement to protect agricultural use and the view shed from Highway One in perpetuity. The state coastal conservancy invested significant funds to ensure that would be the case. Long after the water reclamation facility, if built at this location, is gone, and the one after that, the closest neighbor will still be dedicated to agriculture. I would urge the council to permanently abandon the pursuit of making this site anything more than a water reclamation facility with the minimum building footprint possible for that use. Adding public works facilities will not only serve to significantly complicate the environmental impact report, but will also expend a significant amount of consultant and staff time on an uncertain outcome. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
I know it's late, but I just wanted to mention again on construction manager risk. I realize we've talked about that. I know that there's different honickers for it and I heard Rob say that it's not possible for us to consider that as a means of project control. But I also heard our legal counsel say that there's other ways that we can give incentives to bring in this project under budget and on schedule. And I think that's imperative, that you design your contracts. And if he's got expertise in being able to do this and get the players, get their skin in the game to where they have to get this thing done with some assurance, from your perspective, with the words that he should be able to give you, that this is going to come in on schedule and under budget. It's imperative that you do this and this should be one of your highest priorities. And get these guys, the players, all the players, in this, get some of their skin in this game. I think that your financial arm of the city should get involved in the project finances too. I know that your finance system is somewhat in disarray, from my perspective anyway. And I think that you need to really reinforce the financial arm of this project and give it some independence from the project players so that you may have appropriate checks and balances for where you are and where you're going and how long it's going to take for you to get there. You got ProCar. You spent a lot of money on ProCar. You should be able to take advantage of it and you should get frequent, very useful, friendly reports that should give you insights to where you're going to go. So I know I'm running out of time. I thought the presentation was very good tonight. I just wanted to tell you that I got pretty good information that Kayukas is using construction manager risk method for bringing their project in. So I don't know, I don't want to get into semantics or anything, but that's my information. I trust Black and Beach and I want to stay involved in this thing, but I wish you luck.
Bill, thanks very much. We want you involved too. Thank you. If we can get on to discussion points for the facilities master plan, I know we went early into a lot more detail on water and some other things and it's hard not to, considering how it all flows together, pardon the pun, but really it is. So basically want to get some good input. And first of all, I just, I'm going to start off a little bit and help us kind of limit our time and as far as how much we, you know, just keep ourselves concise. So first of all, I want to thank our WRFAC for the review and the questions they provided. It was a great meeting, there's a lot of detailed information, glad that that was incorporated. I think it's, we need to recognize that group for all the detailed work that they did. You know, I echo a lot of the points and I echo Mr. Woodson and the percent, the percentage of cost. So glad to hear some adjustment. The job will expand to the time allotted, so we've reduced that from seven years to five. The landscape screening, you know, I noticed we have the pictures on there, you know, I think we could probably consider a little bit more tree screening for that, you know, I'm really not sure if this is the time to insert that or not, but I just want to make those comments. And really, I mean fundamentally, this project to get done is cost effective on time. In my view, making the project as small as possible, eliminating any kind of barriers is paramount. So, you know, I know we've got goals that we started with on this, but in my view, we need to get it done as quickly as possible. I understand that through conversations with staff that it might be appropriate to evaluate everything at once and then make that decision at the end. And I understand the comments from the gentleman out in the audience about how much resources we're putting into just doing that. But I will say, I'm apprehensive about that at this point. There were some really good comments from the WRFAC on minimizing this project, both in the roads and the footprint overall. And from my perspective on moving forward on this, it has to be done as quickly and efficiently as possible. And, you know, if we need to start talking about reducing the scope, I'm looking at that personally. But I am willing to entertain what this will look like at the end, but quite frankly, I see, you know, the smallest site that we can get out of this and the most cost effective we can. So those are my comments and John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I absolutely agree with you. My comments will be to the point brief. First, I realize also that we have goals, but I do not believe in my discussions with a number of community members that the rates are tolerable as presented. And again, I know that they were built according to goals that were established. However, we have a number of people out there that are on fixed incomes, that fall into categories that might even be considered low income and these rates are just not going to be tolerated by the community. Two, I agree with building just what is needed. There are so many unknowns right now with regard to state water costs, our master water reclamation plan, if groundwater ejection will work, how much we'll get out of it, et cetera, et cetera, the amount of grant dollars that we're going to receive, 10 versus 20%, the contingency, on and on, that these unknowns have significant impacts to cost. And we need to quickly dial them in and get this project to a scope that does meet the affordability of the community. I think we should also respect the comments of Mr. Mayno, who has come to numerous meetings. And I have a great respect for the land that is out there and the desire by that family to see that exist into perpetuity. And he has been very gracious, in my mind, in allowing us to do what we're doing. And I think the footprint should be limited to wastewater treatment facility slash WRF and not include anything else, and I'm not convinced that there's a need to do that. I would also echo the comment about moving as expeditiously as possible and I agree 100% with Mr. Woodson, who has said it at multiple occasions, unless there's skin in the game and there are incentives to make this thing come in early, there will be no need, desire, and/or push to make it happen. So I think Mr. Panoni should be charged to help us look at how we design our contracts to be able to meet the needs of, as Bill would say, getting skin in the game. Thank you so much for the work that you've done. Thank you, Matt, for your presentation. Thank you, staff, for all your wonderful work. I know it's difficult and you've spent a tremendous amount of time. And I just want to offer up my appreciation for what you have done and what you continue to do. Again, my bottom line is, as it is, it's just not affordable in the community. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Maros.
I concur fully with the remarks that have been made so far. I think project cost has to be the primary consideration moving forward and that the facilities master plan in its final form should only include WRF elements. And I think would be, I found this report confusing to the public because the cost estimates did not include all of the elements that were in the design and that, I think that would just lead us down the wrong path to include elements in the master plan that are not in the cost estimate. So I just think we should stick to the wastewater treatment plant moving forward. I would like to see in where you make statements like, we evaluated the two alternatives and this one was lower, I'd like to actually see those figures so we know what you considered. And I'm thinking specifically about the two alternative pipelines where you just kind of made a statement and also some detail which you just provided about why we're not considering the Choro Valley. And that may be in the water reclamation plan, but those are my comments.
Good comments. Thanks, Maros. Matt?
One of the things that, and I know, speaking to the choir and the echo over the last few years, we've talked about the different sites that we've talked about on 41 and then even finding, coming to do the South Bay site. One thing that attracted us to this was being the minimalistic concept of it. We didn't necessarily have to ramp it up, camouflage it any way, it was going to be a functional industrial site. The pictures and plants and everything, it looks wonderful and great. But however, in terms of the KISS principle, keeping it simple, the bare minimum, as we're talking about, we've said this along and along, so I don't know, I mean, I understand aesthetics is one thing, but if that's one way to save money, I mean, if it's going to be on prime ranchland, no one's going to see it, we don't necessarily have to make it the most aesthetic piece of property in the world. And then looking at this, going down the road, I agree with what's been said, this cost angle, part of it is, you know, going to pass generations in the city. We didn't raise our water rates or sewer rates for, you know, 20 years, 10 years. And so this cost surprise that we're going to give to a lot of folks, we have to be careful about that. And so I know you've been assigned with a lot of different things to study, but we want to necessarily keep these costs down. That's where.
Red?
I agree with building the least expensive facility that will do the job for us. But I think that the city owes it to ourselves to look at the highest and best use of the coastal land where the existing wastewater treatment plant is. And to me, making as much of that land available as is possible for revenue-producing uses in the future is going to be good for the city economically. And I was talking specifically about the maintenance facility as to whether we continue to park vehicles on the coastal plain or if we move them out of town onto the WRF site. I'm not sure from the views that we saw on the slides, that moving the maintenance facility out there didn't look as if it increased the footprint of what we're building out there. So I'm going to look to the EIR to tell us what is going to be the best economic value of where we locate our maintenance facility. Other than that, I'm satisfied with the way we're proceeding and I thank you very much for what you're doing.
Okay, thanks for all those comments. I think, just like the WRFAC, we were able to kind of distill all that together and put that into the next step where we're going. I think we had some good comments and things we might want to see. Thank you. Are there any, anything else?
I just wanted to add one thing that was a follow-on to some of those comments. On the EIR, the way it's scoped right now, whether or not that was, the city facilities are looked at at the site or not, it's really not going to change the cost of the EIR. It's something that can be looked at one way or the other, just so you understand that.
Okay, thanks. And with that, I'd conclude item C2 and we'll move on to item C1, Strategic Planning Overview and Approval of the 2017 Meeting and Budget Schedule. Mr. Buckingham?
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We can, somebody could be bringing that up on the screen, but I will, since there's 17 minutes till the bewitching hour, I'm going to start talking.
Yeah, thank you.
So the purpose of this is to provide a brief overview of the city's strategic planning framework and to gain approval of the 2017 council goal-setting and budget calendars. Recommendation is that the city council receive and file the strategic planning framework overview. It's just a brief overview of what our process is, to approve the recommendation to adopt a one-year versus two-year objectives for year 2018, and then to approve the budget calendar and the, or excuse me, the council meeting calendar, the goals and objectives, the advisory board, and the budget schedules. Brief overview of the city's strategic planning framework. In August of 2015, the city council unanimously approved the strategic planning and budgeting framework. In December, the council approved a In December, the council approved a strategic planning framework policy that was in a white paper form that flowed out of that. So we, we have a council-approved strategic planning framework. This is what it looks like. This is what the council approved in its policy. And very briefly, it's all underpinned by a 10-year budget forecast that is updated annually. We will update that for you on February the 28th. It shows that every four years in following presidential election years, the city council reviews our city goals and affirms, confirms that we've got the right goals or perhaps adjusts those goals. What we recommended when we approved this was that we then do two-year objectives. So the last two years, we've done one-year objectives, objectives based on one fiscal year. When we approved this policy a year ago, we said, let's start doing two-year objectives. And then we said we were going to keep doing one-year budgets. So this was the four-two-one method, four-year goals, two-year objectives, and one-year budgets. Quick, we're recommending one change to this, and that is for this year to do one-year objectives. You've read the staff report. Staff recommends that we keep going with one-year objectives. It gives our residents more of a feel that they can steer the city if they get to provide input every year instead of wait two years. Waiting two years will make us feel, I believe, less responsive as a government. The, I'll just, I'll leave it at that. So bottom lines, we recommend that we, what we do is we go to this, which is a four-one-one. You see the four-year goals and then we'll do one-year but, objectives and one-year budget as we have the last few years. And then in the years ahead, if we want to consider going to biennial budget, some biennial objectives, we could do that then. Advisory board work plans, very briefly, the, this is the same process that we implemented for the first time last year in December of January. Advisory boards right now will have an opportunity to provide input to goal setting. They can either do that through their staff member or they can do that with direct discussion to the council or a letter to the council. And many are already doing that. In February, the staff and the boards will develop draft work plans. In, in March, the boards will finalize those draft work plans. In April, you'll have joint meetings with every one of the boards for about 45 minutes each for you to, to horse trade a little bit on the work plans and make sure that you're happy with, with what they want to do and they're happy with what you want to do. And then in May, you will actually approve in a regular session of the council, the work plans for each of the advisory boards. And that's what they work on for, through the year. And if there's something new, new comes out, then they can always have their staff member bring a recommendation to change that work plan to the council during the year or, or they could write a letter directly to you asking to do that. This is the overview of the council calendar. Meetings will remain on the second and fourth Tuesdays. No meeting on the fourth Tuesday of July, November, or December. Study sessions are generally the fourth Tuesday of the month before the, the council meeting on the fourth Tuesday. Closed sessions are generally the second Tuesday, but there are exceptions to both of those. General timing, study sessions and joint meetings start at four, closed sessions at 4:30, regular meetings at six. And per our municipal code, public hearings cannot start earlier than 7:00 PM. The goal-setting schedule, we're doing the overview to, to you right now. The, there are two goals, study sessions scheduled in January on the 10th and the 24th. And then, and then an open session of a regular council meeting. The council have another opportunity to discuss goals, so it's not being done only at study sessions. And then we'll hopefully be on track to approve goals on the, on February the 28th at the, at the council meeting. The work plan for the advisory boards, they are recommending items for goals now. They'll begin to, actually, I just talked through this, so I'm going to skip that. And this, I'm sorry, is mis-titled. This is the budget schedule, not the advisory board work plan schedule. I forgot to change. That should say budget schedule up here. So the, on the 28th of February, the council will receive the 10-year budget forecast. Also, on the same day, you'll hopefully approve our goals and objectives for the year. And that will give your staff what we need to do to start prepping a budget for you. In the, in the month of March, the staff department heads internally will start to develop their internal budgets. In the month of April, the department heads come in contact with the city manager and the finance director. And that's when we start taking all of those various department budgets and turn them into one city budget. And we take the council's goals and objectives as, as the primary input into that process. The, then there are three, or on April 28th, and I put it in print here, the city manager will deliver the draft budget to the city council. And you'll have that for two weekends and a week in between before we start into the budget process. We have three budget study sessions scheduled. Hopefully it will only take two. Last year it took one. But we've got three scheduled just in case. And then hopefully on track for you to approve the budget at a council meeting on June 13th. Our recommendation is that you adopt resolution 8116, which affirms the strategic planning process or policy. It directs the setting of one-year objectives this year instead of two-year objectives. And then it adopts the council meeting calendar, the goal-setting schedule, the advisory board schedule, and the budget schedule. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Great. We don't have any public comment for this. If we can, we've got seven, eight minutes. Let's see how we can do this. If we want to just do questions and discussion, Red, you want to start us off on this?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. Matt?
I'm good.
John? Marles?
I don't have questions. I have discussion.
Go ahead.
We, I have already talked to Mr. Buckingham about the possibility of incorporating more citizen input into the process. I think it's a great addition to have the advisory boards come up with some ideas for objectives. But I would like to see us reach out to some of the committees and interest groups in the city, like the Bike Committee and the Citizens Beautification Committee and whatnot, to encourage them to attend the budget study sessions. I know some of them are aware of that and do come, and they tend to get their objectives in the strategic plan. And I would like to give that opportunity to all of the groups in the city. So that's my one suggestion for possibly changing the, the schedule.
Okay. Thanks. And I have a similar discussion. I mentioned that as well. I know that we have the study sessions called out for, and I know when we first adopted the policy and had the discussion, we were in a review of, kind of affirmation of goals that we had set. And we're in that four-year cycle. I would be more inclined to adopt kind of the original, kind of a survey method of outreach for goals. You know, we had some kids that came in here not too long ago, wanted a skateboard park. You know, did they miss it? Because we had a study session and said, you know, where did we miss that? And, you know, I know we're, you know, I'm not asking for perfection, but I think that four years ago, when we did our pretty robust outreach in the surveys, and it was really a lot of information. So I would like to see us do that and actually get into that four-year cycle. And that was my understanding when we were, you know, adopting this at, at that point. You know, I feel the study sessions, you know, mid-year up until that kind of affirmation works, but, you know, I think at some point, we need to have that survey and a little bit more outreach for the community. That's my thoughts. And that may require us to modify this, you know, council meeting schedule that's, that's proposed, but those are my comments. And, you know, if you have any suggestions on, you know, how we can modify some of the dates to accommodate that. You know, I know when we did this four years ago, we were actually having this meeting now in Janu-, on January 10th. And then going out for an RFP to get a consultant to do the whole workshop and everything. And we were still able to get it all done before and tie it into the budget. So, you know, I know we've, we've got this laid out, but those are my comments. Do you have any?
Discussion.
Sure. Thank you. So a couple of thoughts, when we, when we developed the, the schedule, we sort of discussed that many organizations use six years as the ideal goal-setting process for, for large organizations. Think about something like improve streets or build a wharf. Those are, those are sort of six-year sort of things. So the, the excellent outreach that was led by a consultant four years ago to produce our 10 goals, which are generally still standing, is, is pretty fresh in the, in the goal-setting sort of piece of strategic planning. So the other thing that the council can do is, is assess internally, having been in the city and communicated a lot with folks recently, is, are our 10 goals right now about right? Or are they, do we, or do they seem out of whack? And so what I'm getting at is, is we will work to, we can certainly do some survey work internally to provide additional opportunities, ways, methods for people to provide, get their goals to us. Survey Monkey, what are the top 10 things, you know? Here's our 10 goals. What do you think of these? Is there one more missing? We can do that on the council direction and money if you want to go through a consultant-led goal-setting process.
I'm not suggesting that by any means. I was just using that as an example that at, when we did that, we were actually starting this meeting, the first part of January, went out to RFP, got a consultant, did the survey, did the workshop, and we're still able to tie it, tie it together. I'm not suggesting that. You know, it worked at the time. I think internally, we can do that. And I think we can do the surveys. Those were my comments. And I don't know if, John, you had something to add on that, but I'm just trying to, trying to work that in.
Yeah. I agree with both Marles and the mayor about the outreach. And my thought is that we have a number of organizations. I think you, right now, we simply present this to, or not necessarily present it, but give it to and invite them to come. And then I think you have Facebook, you have For a Survey, you have the, the Neighborhood or whatever it's called, which is-
Nextdoor.
Nextdoor, which is becoming quite robust and with conversation. And a number of other venues to get information out in social media. And to me, that's a good way to, to get it out there, get some feedback with a simple survey, as well as an invite and review of the process.
Okay. So we've just got a couple of minutes left. So if we want to do some of, some more of that outreach and the Survey Monkey and do some more outreach like that, it doesn't bode for, let's do a study session on January 10th, if we're going to do that first and then kind of inform that, that study session with some of the survey stuff. So forgive me, I didn't really get a lot of prep on this with you ahead of time, just brief discussion on, hey, what other kind of alternatives there were for outreach. So if we can't come to some solution on how we can modify that based on this schedule tonight, just looking for some, some comment and input on how we could adjust that. You know, unless you want me to.
Yeah. I think, I think we, great thing about social media is we can do it very quickly. So, so I, I think we, you, you could choose to have a January 10th study session and stay on that calendar. And staff will start working tomorrow on, on getting some of the survey things out of things we weren't already planning to do along with Facebook and the webpage and, and those things. And specifically addressing some of the other community groups, Rotary, Marbey, Beautiful Marbey and Bloom, those that, that we may not have. So, so we can, I, I think we can do that and still start on January 10th if you'd like to. And one of the things I recall clearly from last year is, it was the second study session. And even at the council meeting, when we were still adding things to the, to the process. So we could start the process on January 10th and then continue it on the 14th. And that doesn't mean we can't continue to take inputs as we go along. Or you can choose to, to delay the process.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, I mean, I don't see the necessarily rush where we have to get it right on the first, you know, for, for a study session personally, but as long as we can, you know, hit the ground and get going. So, but, you know, I know this is what's proposed. And, you know, if we can get, if we can get the outreach out there on the, the survey, that'd be great. You know, I don't necessarily feel the rush for January 10th, we have to have this study session so we can get everything done. But those are, those are my comments, as long as we can get the-
Yeah. I just wanted to add, it seems to me that after the first study session, you've got something for people to react to. And that would be a good time to actually do a survey and say, these are our preliminary objectives that we've talked about in our first study session, and then get some input relative to those to see what's missing, what else would you add? But it's, it's easier for people to react to something, it seems to me. So that's another thought. I just throw it in there.
Yeah.
So I'm prepared to make motion if I could. I move that we adopt resolution number 81-16 that includes the city council meeting, goal-setting, budget development, and advisory board work plan process for calendar year 2017 with the incorporation of significant community outreach according to a plan developed by staff.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, and that would, the outreach would include the surveys, of course. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries. We are about a minute over. We can call a meeting adjourned or get on to future agenda items.
Move to extend beyond 11 o'clock?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Motion by Mr. Heding, second by Marles. Any further, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That was 5-0. Go ahead. Future agenda items.
I voted no.
Okay. You did. Okay. Full one.
So, future agenda item, I'm not sure if it's an agenda item, but I, I promised I'd bring it up and I'm, I'm not sure where it goes. But the former mayor, Ms. Peters, asked about the consideration of community theater issues. And I know we all, maybe we all got an email regarding that. And, and I'm not sure where the appropriate place for that to go would be, but I did promise as a constituent, outreach to bring it up. So I'm open.
So just have to make this ex parte. I already was kind of prepared for maybe if that was a future agenda item. I have, you know, living within 500 feet for that, that would all come in. So based on the consultant, calling our city attorney, I'm going to step down, recuse myself from the discussion of a future agenda item. Thank you.
Has to do with community theater.
Great.
And a desire to give council input with regard to that consideration. I do think the arts are extremely important for the community. I do think it's a missing piece for our community. And so I would support that being on the future agenda. So do I have concurrence with that?
Yes. I would too.
Looks like I do. So anybody else have, oh, Mr. Mayor, we're back.
Specifically what I-
Hold on, Mr.
Yeah. The discussion of- I think what you want to talk about is waiving or reducing the permit fees for the special use permit that would be required.
That could be possibly one of the outcomes.
Yes.
Yes. Do I need to be that specific? Then I will.
I just need to know what to put on the agenda.
Community theater, consideration of waiving fees for such.
Right.
Yeah. Thanks.
Is there a process in place for people to appeal fees as they go through the planning process?
No. They bring it forward to council, either at public comment and council chooses to agendize it, or they contact their councilmen via writing and council chooses to agendize it.
Okay. Okay. We have support for that and we'll invite the mayor back to close the meeting. Or if there are other agenda items, be considered.
I'd like to propose an agenda item. Measure J narrowly failed countywide. It did receive about 70% of the vote of the Marbey voters. I would like for a future agenda item to discuss supplemental funding for street repairs and transportation improvement to include the timing. And I have, if there is support to put that on the agenda, I have some specific items that I would like to see included in the- that I would like to see included in the staff report.
I would support that. You wanna discuss exactly what it is you wanna, you wanna discuss everything? Go ahead.
Yeah. Staff report should include scope of work, whether it includes street repair only, or whether it would also include transportation improvements such as the Highway 141 intersection improvement, Moray Bay Cayucus extension of California Coastal Trail, or a Harbor Walk extension from Moro Creek. Those are only examples. It should include the annual amount of money that we would like to raise, should include a sunset date. It should include the possible source of funding, which could be sales tax, parcel tax, TOT, utility tax. Should include the type of vote we're looking for, whether it be a 50% vote or a 2/3 vote, depending upon how it's phrased. And if there's a 50% vote, the type of oversight, whether it be Citizens Committee, CFAC, and the timing of the election.
And I would just add one more thing to include information about Slocog and another county, the discussion of a possible another county sales tax, how that would impact that. I'd support that. So, we have one, two, three.
I just wanted to say that one of the discussions that we had at PWEB was to add an item similar to this to the PWEB's agenda for next year, to look at these various alternatives for funding streets. And my only concern about this is that if we're gonna go to a Prop 218, depending on when that timing is, I think it's very difficult for us to go back a second time with another tax increase of some kind. So, I think we need to consider that carefully and would perhaps ask PWEB to move forward to examine in a systematic way the pros and cons of these various alternatives before we agendize it as a city council item.
I agree with Marlis. I think, given the schedule that we've been presented with with regard to the wastewater treatment facility and the possibility of a 218 vote, I think it would be detrimental to consider an initiative close in timing to that. So, I couldn't support that right now.
So, would you support information, informational discussion on kind of streets?
Indeed.
Or just?
Indeed, I would. It was very prescriptive. My colleague, my new colleague, was very prescriptive, and I was, that's what I had trouble with. But a general discussion, I would support.
Okay. So, it seems like you have a request for a future agenda item on the whole thing. Could we just, so we have a general discussion on that, or those specifics still are basically just information, but you wanna discuss, hey, what's the strategy moving forward?
Sure.
Is what it is?
Sure. I support that.
Yeah, and I would support that if we have the first step of PWEB doing some analysis of it, that maybe comes to us with some information about the alternatives, so we could then have a discussion about it with more information.
Okay, so I'm getting, one, we want a future agenda item discussed for council. You're saying you want it to go to PWEB before it comes to us.
Yes, just the timing of the agenda item is what I'm talking about.
Yeah, and I think, I'm sorry, but let's just bring it back to us, and then we'll do that. And then we'll just have our discussion, and then we can kind of see if we wanna push it out.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah, if we wanna be more specific, we can give PWEB guidance.
Now, we're trying to get through this.
I have one more. Since I voted against going beyond 11 o'clock.
Yeah, I noticed that.
Yeah. We talked a little bit about some of the special interest groups. I know that the one I've been working with, Citizens Bike Committee, does have a formal relationship with the city created by motion, council motion in 2001. And I've talked to Mr. Buckingham about possibly extending that sort of formal, or discussing extending a formal relationship to some of our other special interest groups, such as Moray Bay and Bloom, Open Space Alliance, Gorilla Gardeners, Historical Society, Citizens Beautification, and so on. And through that mechanism, folding them into the goal-setting process as we talked about earlier on another agenda item.
Not sure I understand what it is, but.
Well, and that's why I want Mr. Buckingham to prepare a staff report, is for him to think about what are ways that these various special interest groups can become more formally aligned with the city's advisory boards, I guess is the way to put it.
Okay. Since, I'm sorry, because it's a little bit late, can I make a suggestion that we just continue with the two future agenda items, and maybe we refine that? I don't think it's any pressing. We can come back and maybe have some refined language in what it is you want to do, and maybe at the next council meeting, you can have a future agenda item, discuss that after a little bit more conversation with Dave. Is that reasoned by?
You mean sharpen my fuzzy thinking?
Yeah, a little bit.
Okay, I got it.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks. So, we have two future agenda items that were discussed, the little theater, and then the streets discussion, and with that, no further discussion, we'll call a meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Well, I almost lost it at the end. I'm getting a little tired.
I know. It's hard. Gotta go home and eat now.
Yeah, I know.